I am.
Good afternoon.
Call the Board of Supervisors in the session for our Monday, January 31st work session. We have Stella here and Brian Preston for the Conservation will be presenting first.
That's good. Well, thanks for allowing me to come talk to you today. I just want to introduce a few of my board members. George Davis is here in person and I think online I seen Jackie Kerr, our newest board member. Stacy Conforty, Pat Ray. So all of our board members are present today. So I just want to go over kind of a brief overview of the Conservation Department, where we've been at over the last year. And our, our new mission statement, this came out with our, the adoption of our new long-range plan is a network of high-quality parks, habitats, trails, and water supported by communities passionate about nature. And so one of the things about our parks, long-range parks, open spaces, and trails plan, we did receive an award, an honor award from the Iowa Association of Land Architects, I believe it was. And if you're interested, we have a plaque that we received, it was presented to us. And I think it would look nice down here at the courthouse. We don't have a home for it right now at the Nature Center, but I think it would look nice in here. But go on to the next slide. So just a reminder that the Conservation Board was established back in 1956 by a vote of the people. And eighty-four percent of the folks in Dubuque County voted to create the Conservation Department. Back in 1989, the state law was changed from May, create a conservation board, to shall. And the last one, Elmaki County Conservation Board was, was added in 1989. So to date, we manage 2,800 acres, 21 areas altogether, eight campgrounds, 30-mile-long Heritage Trail, our Fillmore Golf Course, four Mississippi River accesses, and our environmental education program. And, you know, relating that back to our, our mission, you know, if we want to have a citizens that are really concerned about trails and water quality and, and open spaces, that our environmental education program is really important to us in helping to promote those areas and those practices that are, are best for the community. This is the most recent park map that we have. We just did add an area. We called them McCarthy Wildlife Area. It was 100 acres that was left in the state to the Conservation Department for habitat development. And it will be planted with, it's 100 acres off of McCarthy Road, south of Highway 151. And it'll be planted with Native Prairie and open to public hunting, which were two of the wishes from Mr. McCarthy. There's a list of all the areas that we're presently managing. And our staff. Now, I apologize to Jackie, but we still have Cindy Gatto, this is a board member of Jackie Kerr. Is our newest Conservation Board member that started in, in January. In our staff, we have a really great staff. And I think Jason's even on here. No Jason? But Jason Denlinger was just added to the staff. He started in late December as a naturalist. And he's over at EB Lions. Great addition to the staff, really, really happy with all the work that everybody's done over the last year. But just a little bit about Jason, he came from Mozambique, Africa. He worked at Gorongosa National Park. And he just had a, a program on Saturday where he introduced himself and talked about his, his work as research manager over there. And it was a standing room only presentation. We had over 115 people there. And it was also streamed live on Facebook. So I'm not sure how, how many people watched it that way, but an interesting talk and he's going to be a great addition to the staff, bring a lot of unique experience and looking forward to that. Our 2021 crew, we had grounds maintenance. Not pictured, we have one of them not pictured, but Rich Feeder, Thomas Wolfe, and Kevin Neemer were our grounds maintenance crew. Those are a recent addition to our, our summer staff, where we took some of our conservation aid positions and made them 24-hour-a-week positions. Primarily mow grass for us, but we've been having a hard time attracting seasonal help, especially college-age kids to work in the parks. So we think this is really successful and I, and we may expand this in the future. As more of the retired folks are interested in working, they're not, we're interested in working 40 hours a week, but three days a week seems to be a good fit. And our conservation aides, these are our college interns. They're pursuing some, for the most part, some career in conservation or natural resources. And really do the, are, are the backbone of our, our staff during the summer when we get really busy. Our Iowa Workforce Conservation Crew, so this is a unique crew. Two staff members, one from senior and one from Hempstead High School helped supervise this group. They come out and do all, there's really no limitations unto the work they can do. They're all working in the parks, on trails, painting picnic tables, maintaining other facilities in the parks. And it's a really great opportunity. We work with them on job resume writing and interviewing skills. And we get a lot of work, great work done with them through the park. So it's a partnership with the Iowa Workforce Development folks and the Dubuque Community School District. And our trail crew, these are high school kids that, and our, our crew leader, Tom Kugler has been our, our trail crew leader. And they primarily work on, on trail improvement. So they go out and work on Finley's Landing or Heritage Trail, Swiss Valley, Whitewater Canyon. And, and improving our, our hiking and biking trails. They also work on resume writing skills and interview skills with us. And that is funded through the Conservation Department's annual budget. The Iowa Workforce Crew is 100% funded by Iowa Workforce. Use in our parks remained high this year. So Finley's Landing, you can see, remained steady from 2020 to, or 2021. Swiss Valley Nature Center, we had show a drop-off there. I think that is mainly due to gaps in our data on our counters. From we lost some weeks there when the counters weren't working and, and had to put new ones and swap things around. Mud Lake, we did not have a counter there in 2020. I would guess that the use at Mud Lake is, is pretty much the same as it was in 2022. With the increase of use of our, our outdoor areas that throughout the county. And New Line pretty close to the same, but dipped a little bit. The interesting thing with our revenue is our revenue continues to grow. FY '21, we had $350,000 worth of revenue. This year in FY '22, we're higher than when this data was put together, but we're right around $250,000 or more already going into the season. So we will easily exceed our expect, or $270,000 is what we have budgeted for revenue for 2022, but we are going to sail past that. Pretty exciting. And we did increase our, our projections for user fees for FY '23 to be more in line with what I think the new normal is now. Economic impact, I just want to point out that, you know, our, our parks do have a, a huge impact on local economic activity and to the tune of, of over $2 million a year. One of the interesting things is not included in this figure are, are, are mountain bike parks and Interstate Power Preserve and at the Proving Grounds. Personally, I've been out there and talked to folks from Council Bluffs, Des Moines, Minneapolis, Madison, all over the, the Midwest on a, on a continual basis. We, we continue to see people driving quite a distance to come and, and utilize those unique facilities. There's not many mountain bike facilities around and having these really high, high-quality areas is really drawing people to the area. Our environmental education program, and, and I really think this is a really important part of our total program is to have engage, you know, our youth and, and our, our citizens in the county to come out, get familiar with our natural resources. Things are so much different than when I grew up. We had three channels on the TV and we did not have smartphones. And it's so easy for folks nowadays not to get out and, and enjoy the natural resources. And we think it's really important to get them out, familiarize them so that they're not terrified, that they can go out and, and really find some great hobbies and, and activities outside. So some of our goals for environmental education are to expand our citizen science projects such as Bio Blitzes, utilizing bluebird nesting data and other local and national, on a local and national scale. Our outdoor adventures program with the Dubuque Community School District really kicked off in earnest last fall. We had the first half of the school groups and it's really exciting to see so many people utilizing our parks. And this spring, we'll be also utilizing EB Lions Nature Center for the outdoor adventure programs. And those will start, I think in March is when our, our field trips start. So we'll have an average of three school buses at each of the facilities. And it'll be exciting to see that many folks out, many kids getting a great experience. One of the things that it's going to be later in our presentation, but our mowing to monarchs program, providing assistance to private landowners to put native plants on their property has been a huge success. And we really have developed a lot of excitement about that program. To Caitlin Moller, where our staff mostly handles that, but it is really an exciting and up-and-coming program that has touched a lot of folks. And we'd like to continue on with that. So more about our social media, our Facebook site continues to have quite a few followers. And Heritage Trail and Dubuque County Conservation Facebook, we recently changed from Swiss Valley Nature Center Facebook page to Dubuque County Conservation Facebook to be more encompassing of everything that goes on. And I think the other signal, insignia is Instagram. I wouldn't know anything about that, but we don't have as many followers on that, but hopefully we'll increase that over time. Our volunteer program has been really accelerating it off the charts. And it's really been a huge benefit to, to the department and to the community. We have nearly 750 volunteers right now that contribute over 2,600 hours of volunteer time in our parks. The state values that at about $28 an hour, which would total right around $75,000 worth of work accomplished in our parks by volunteers. These are some of the examples of projects they've done, helping us install interpretive signs in, in our parks, litter cleanups, bluebird house monitoring. We have a group, we have several groups that come out and monitor our bluebird box program for us. And it takes a lot of time to monitor these. These, these gentlemen are out here every other week, all summer long, monitoring the boxes. If they're not monitored with the rise of buffalo gnats, the, the, the nestlings don't make it. They don't survive. When, when they're monitoring them, they can see these pests, wasps nests, buffalo gnats, and they can treat and, and effectively take care of them. And we really are excited about the success of the nesting box program. It's kind of scary what we've seen in the last year or two on the populations of our, our songbirds are, are declining really fast. And we think that pests such as a buffalo gnats are a big part of that. Cleanups along our rivers and streams, restoration workdays. We've had groups at Pullman Prairie, Little McCoca River Mounds Preserve, and at Sunny Crest, taking invasive species off of our prairies, making sure the sunlight's getting to the ground. We have some extremely unique prairies, especially at Pullman and Sunny Crest. The state botanist told me at one point that Sunny Crest was probably the most diverse prairie he's seen intact prairie, which is
Just turn it down.
And on the lower right-hand side, we also have a lot of sporting teams that come out and help. This, this picture happens to be of the senior high school baseball team that did community service work up at a, at the Little McCoca River Mounds clearing brush off of the, the burial mounds themselves. Very labor-intensive. We do not use power tools up on the mounds in respect for the, the, the burial site. And they helped us out a great deal. We also have many cross-country teams come out to Heritage Trail to help pick up litter and, and, and do improvements. And also the golf teams at Cascade come out to Fillmore Golf Course and help us as long, as well as the cross-country team. So lots of youth out volunteering in our areas, which is exciting. You see here that most of the volunteer hours are spent at Swiss Valley, but we are working to get that spread out to all the parks throughout the system. And Caitlin is overseeing our volunteer program and doing a wonderful job of connecting the park rangers and, and lining up work. And I think they're starting to see the value of working with the volunteers. They can get a lot more work done by spending some time organizing these workdays and helping than they can by themselves. Eagle Scout projects, we have a number of Eagle Scout projects in, in our parks and just want to give them a shout out. Charlie Bransker from Troop 69, Nate Fisher from Troop 7, Sam Kaufman from Troop 94, Jonathan Park from Troop 91, Cold Hill from Troop 94, and Ben Van Orsdale from Troop 22. And these are some of the examples of the work that they've done in our areas. There's some wood duck boxes, some mallard nesting tubes, some bluebird nesting structures, some bat boxes. The one on the lower left was a interpretive trail at the Swiss Valley Nature Center where he put together a pamphlet and put a post with numbers up that explained interesting, unique characteristics found at the preserve. And people could walk around, find that number and then read about that, the words pointing out. There's a changing station built at the Proving Grounds. A lot of folks come out and, and ride before or after work and want to change and get dressed and go out and ride on the trail. So that was a great addition to the area. And then a, some seating and a viewing platform out along the Heritage Trail out near Split Rock. So getting into our proposed budget for FY '23, our base revenue will increase by $40,000, $30,000 on other rec fees and $10,000 from golf fees for FY '23. And for our operational expenses for FY '23, they're projected to increase by $53,000. $27,000 of that is from the EB Lions agreement where we are taking on some of those costs. The other $20,000 is increase on fuel expenses, electrical expenses mostly, and increase on sanitation disposal. So we've seen a huge increase in the, the necessity to have our, a lot of our, our dumpsters are on call. And we, we call the refuse company and they dump them when they're full. And we've had a, a large increase on the amount of garbage in our parks from the higher usage. So for the past year, these are some of the things that we were unable to accomplish. Heritage Trail Bridge Number Two has been completely replaced with a really nice, modern structure that's going to last a long time. And we actually have a lot better clearance underneath that bridge for equipment passing and, and it's a much, that bridge is going to be there for 100 years, which we're excited about. We made the connection, there has been a parking lot along South John Deere Road with not a connection to the Heritage Trail. And we were able to put a, a blacktop connection from that parking lot to the trail. So that people don't have to, didn't have to cross South Grandview or South John Deere Road. And they can, they can get there without weaving through the traffic. We resurfaced four miles of limestone servicing on the Heritage Trail. Every year, we like to do a, a four or five mile stretch to keep up. And we do it with live bottom trucks and we utilize our, our skid steer with our grader attachment on it to blade that and make it smooth. This year, that was last fall, this fall, we did a section out by Dyersville and didn't come out quite as nice. We didn't get the rain, timely rains, and it didn't pack down as well as we'd hoped. So we had a few complaints on, on the resurfacing out there, but the reason we do it in the fall is the use is much lower. We usually do it in November. And we just didn't have the weather conditions that were conducive to making it set up. That's why we don't do it in the spring. So by spring, we will regrade it and it'll be in really good condition. The Miller McGrath Streambank Stabilization, this is out along the Heritage Trail, near the shooting range. We had some highly eroding stream banks. We were able to pull those back to a three-to-one slope, armor the base or the toe of the slope with rip raft and plant native prairie on the, on the stream banks to stabilize them. So huge, huge improvement. And this is one of the biggest contributors, you know, these cut banks like this to sediment in the, in the Mississippi River and, and the problems with nitrogen and phosphorus getting into the Mississippi River system in the Gulf. Mowing to monarchs. And I touched on that before, but we were able to work with landowners and we're able to plant some native prairie areas in our parks. And this is one of the goals in our long-range plan is to take some of the turf grass mowing out of some of our parks. Some of the, we had wide expanses of Kentucky bluegrass and dandelions that weren't utilized very often. So we took some of those areas and planted these pollinator mixes, really diverse prairie plantings in, at Swiss Valley Park, along with some others. And we're partnered with landowners, private landowners to take some of their mowing out of their yards and plant native prairie. So it's really exciting. Caitlin's been working with this program and had, had huge successes. And we're looking forward to moving on with that program as well. Finley's Landing, received a lot of improvements this year. We were able to get the, finally get the footbridge replaced to the western side of this, the stream. And people have really been appreciative of that. We've first, we rebuilt the suspension bridge there probably five or six times, only to have it wash out in floods. And it was just to the point where it wasn't repairable anymore. We couldn't do anything with what was left of it. So we were able to partner with a local welding welder from Cheryl, and he built us that bridge. We set it and it's been a huge, great success. We replaced the pavilion at Finley's Landing. And we also were able to dredge the harbor because of extremely low water levels. We've added vault latrines at Fillmore, replaced the vault latrines that were not handicap accessible. So now we have accessible restrooms at Fillmore. And also the one on the right was a single stall put in out at Twin Springs on the Heritage Trail. Quite often, when we talk to folks to visit the trail, one of the things holding back a lot of usage of the trail is lack of facilities and lack of water along the trail. So this is, go a long ways into helping with that. The New Line Park, so we, we stabilized the entire stream bank all, all the way along the campground from the bridge to the property line near the campground, which is almost 700 feet of stream bank that was pulled back and stabilized. And really looks a lot better. We did plant some new trees along there. We had to pull some of the trees that were in the line of fire. Most of them were box elder and not very desirable to have along the stream. So we planted new hardwoods, swamp white oaks and some pecans and I think some sycamores and some other native bottomland hardwood species that will do well there. This one was a long time in coming, but we finally got the fishing dock completed, installed at Massey Marina. We've had lots of requests for that over the years. And we replaced the courtesy dock at the boat ramp. And we're able to have our volunteers work on that and retrofit it, put a railing on it. And we installed that as our, our fishing dock here at Massey. So lots of stream restoration projects at Swiss Valley. We did another stream bank stabilization and fish hide project where you can see the, the large blocks of limestone in the, in the far photograph in the left-hand side, those are bank hides that were placed underneath the water. They're made out of three-inch oak lumber. And those provide overhead protection for trout, make a great fishing area. And then we pull back the stream bank behind it and seat it down with native prairie to hold the, the soil. We've had lots of restoration of our foot bridges. And this is an example, one of those at, at the Swiss Valley Nature Preserve. We continue to clean up Bowstring Wildlife Area and we believe we have a tire situation removed. And we're, we're up to about almost 3,000 tires that we've removed from the property and recycled. So it's unfortunate that we had to clean that up, but it, it's nice that it's almost done. And we do have some more refuse garbage that we need to clean up and get out of there, but we're, we're nearing completion on that. We are fortunate to get quite a bit of new equipment this past year. We had a new tractor, a new mower, a couple of new mowers, a new UTV and a new trailer for, that works really well for hauling our snowmobile and our equipment out to the Heritage Trail to plow the paved section of the trail and do other things. Some other vehicles that got replaced, we have a, got a minivan, which has been great for efficiency for hauling folks to programs and, and staff around. And we also got a new truck for our natural resource technician to go out and, and work on natural resource projects like timber stand improvement. And it is a four-wheel-drive truck, so he can get around when he needs to. So getting into our, our improvement request for FY '23. This is our 2013 F-150 pickup. We'd like to replace, it has over 100,000 miles on it. And this is a really important vehicle for us. A lot of our seasonals utilize this vehicle on the weekends. And, and this is one Nate typically drives around. So we'd really like, right to replace that F-150. Our 2000 John Deere 5510, this, this tractor is primarily used on the Heritage Trail. So we use this quite a bit for our, our ditch mower is attached to it. We try to mow the trail at least four times a year. And it's a little bit undersized for what we're trying to ask for it, ask it to do. We'd like to upgrade it to a little bit larger tractor and we have a 2011 front mower that's in need of replacement. This one is currently, I believe, at Fillmore at the golf course. And a UTV replacement, I believe this is probably a 1996, 95 or 96 vintage UTV that is in dire need of replacement. And these UTV And these UTVs are really important for us. They get us out on the trails. We use them a lot to pick up trash in the parks, take to clean restrooms. And our seasonal operate these a lot during the spring when we're doing prescribed fire. All these UTVs have burn rigs that go on them, water tanks with sprayers that we can go out and. And control those fire lines with them too. So lots of different uses for these. UTVs. Our equipment trailer, this is what we haul our mini excavator, our skid steer and our tractors around on. It is. Off the top of my head, I think it's, it's twenty years old now. It's in need of a lot of repairs and, and we would like to replace that equipment trailer. Our Ford Expedition. And this is one of our people movers. When we have our, our seasonal. Staff in, in full gear. It, we don't have enough vehicles to get everybody around in. But this would help us to continue with that. It, it does have, the current expedition has about a hundred and thirty miles, miles on it. The windows. Aren't going up and down anymore. It's, it's in dire need of replacement, but this is what we haul some of the. Trail crews around in and our other seasonal employees when we go out to work sites. Our two thousand six Chevy thirty-five hundred. This is a really important tool for us. This truck has toolboxes. And it carries all kinds of electrical plumbing, construction equipment, has a generator mounted on that. We have ladder racks. It is a one ton. And we would like to replace that. We're. Requesting fifty-two thousand dollars to replace that. One ton utility truck. Fire rings. Unfortunately, it's been really tough to get a lot of equipment. We waited a long time for a lot of the stuff that we've ordered recently. They stopped manufacturing fire rings for quite a while and just started up last week again. But the prices have jumped substantially. So we used to figure about a hundred and thirty-five dollars for a fire ring. They're at two hundred and fifty-eight right now. So. Huge increase in the cost of fire rings. And we would like to replace eighteen of those. In the upcoming twenty-three budget. Also seen a, a pretty big spike in the price of picnic tables frames. And we're asking for six thousand dollars to replace twenty-four picnic tables. Mostly, these are going to be at Massey Marina and New Wine Park where these, these new ones will go to. But Massey still has. Picnic tables that we got used from the Army Corps of Engineers and. They were old and tired when the Army Corps of Engineers got rid of them. We'd like to upgrade those to new. Picnic tables. Many of these are. When they need repairs, it's not worth welding them. Well, weld them and then the, the weld will break on the other side. So. Do we go buy one or? Okay. This is for a request for Massey Marina. We would like to replace some of the existing boat slips with covered slips. So in the lower harbor at Massey, we have uncovered slips, not very desirable for renters. I know I worked on these when I was part-time back in the late nineteen eighties when we constructed these. So they have really performed well, but they're in dire need of replacement. The walkways are only thirty inches wide and they should be forty-eight inches wide. They're not very stable. When you get out on the ends of them. They're very wobbly and folks nowadays want a covered slip. We have a waiting list for covered slips that would fill all of these slips that we're proposing to add down at Massey. I don't know why my pictures turned out so bad, but on the upper harbor at Massey, we currently have client dredging under contract. To dredge the harbor this spring. We had hoped they would have got it completed this fall, but we ran out of. Warm weather and we got pushed into the spring. So we're the first job out the gate in the spring. Currently, a lot of the areas in the upper harbor are a foot or less of water. And we have the dredge boil site all ready to go. So we just need the ice to melt. Over the past several years, the water level in the Mississippi River has remained really high. And a lot of time, this last year being the exception, we had very little water. But what happened is when we had those average of, you know, ten, eleven foot. Water levels in the Mississippi River. That killed all the vegetation on the slopes. So we used to have grass, vegetation on the slopes that grass died. Because it was underwater all year long and now those. Banks are sloughing into the harbor. So we would like to protect those banks from sloughing anymore and keep the. The depth in the harbor as long as we possibly can. I think that's a huge contributor to the shallow water in harbors are those sloughing banks along the. Outside. The Mud Lake Shelter replacement. This shelter was built in the nineteen sixties and really needs to be. Replaced. When we've replaced numerous other shelters in our system and as soon as we replace them, the rental rate goes way up. And the Mud Lake Pavilion currently isn't rented very often, maybe a, a couple of times a month. We'd like to see that increase to at least every weekend. We have a rental or two. But replacing this with a modern facility would go a long ways to helping us get more use in this pavilion. The New Wine Electrical System Upgrade. So when you buy an RV from the. Dealer nowadays that they come standard with fifty amp hookup, all of our. Electricity is thirty amp or lower. At New Wine Park, I think we have twenty, thirty amp sites. And the remainder of them are, are twenty amp. So we were proposing to upgrade our electrical system to fifty amp. We had such a demand out there this summer that we actually melted down our main panel box. And had to replace that on the Fourth of July weekend. We, we ended up giving some refunds because folks didn't want to stay there without electricity. Which is understandable in the hot weather. We are, New Wine Park is our second most used campground. We do get good revenue off of New Wine Campground, especially with the things that's going on at Field of Dreams. We had a steady line of campers there. Proceeding and after the Field of Dreams, a lot of the workers that were working at the Field of Dreams, setting up the stadium and everything stayed at New Wine Park. So with that electrical system, we, we would expand and add an additional four sites at. At least four sites at New Wine Park with the upgrade of that system. Heritage Trail fencing is a continual yearly. Battle. When we took the Heritage Trail on, we had to take on the railroads commitment to do a hundred percent of the fencing along the trail. So typical landowners have fifty-fifty cost share agreement with, or a fencing agreement with the neighbors. We have to do a hundred percent of the fencing. We're prioritizing those landowners along the trail that have cattle. And those get highest priority. So, so far, we've only done fences and are continuing to do fences that have active pastures or. Livestock. I think we did some fencing on one side. It was llamas, but it's not always cattle. Concrete camping pads, you know. Accessibility is, is a huge thing and we are required to have a certain number of accessible campsites for each one of our campgrounds. We are nowhere close to having enough accessible camping pads. We would like to do four camping pads and, and have that be. An annual item for a while until we get up to, you know, the needed number of accessible sites. Swiss Valley and. Mud Lake, I believe we'll be doing some. So we need them at all of our campgrounds, but those are the two. We have three or four at, at Massey right now. One at Swiss Valley. So we need to add some in Swiss Valley for sure. Trail counters. So I gave you some data earlier on some of our use of our parks and there were some missing gaps. And not very reliable data. So we would like to have reliable data on usage of our parks. This fourteen thousand five hundred dollar request would give us, I believe, twenty-four trail counters in the software to run them. Currently, the trail counters we have will go bad. We'll go out to drop, get, get the data off of them. And there'll be nothing on the, and we don't know when they went bad. So we need some new and updated equipment to have some good. Figures on, on the use our areas are getting. Some of them be, there'll be a combination of car counters on the. Park areas and people counters for trails. Mowing to Monarchs. So this, what we're proposing are to do individual pocket. Prairies with fifty individual landowners. And we want to try out another individual. Program that would create larger strips of pollinator habitat, which would be thirty foot width with a max of, max of a hundred and twenty feet wide. And the placement would be around or through a field in a waterway or terrace. Coaching will be required. And partial funding would be provided in a two acre minimum would be required as well as a ten-year commitment to maintain these plantings. But this continues to be a hugely popular program. We have more applications for moors to monarch. People wanting to get into the moors to monarch program that we have money available for it. And I think it's a great way to get people introduced to native landscaping, improving. The soil so we get absorption instead of runoff and, and helping our pollinator populations. The Massey Marina, should have took a picture of this before it snowed. But Massey Marina, the, the concession stand, the, the visitor service building is, is really what people see first when they get to Massey. We have had a higher demand for outdoor seating. People want to sit outside and eat, get food and drink. They also have some bands on weekends that provide entertainment. And we would like to. Improve the patio area, do some landscaping. Currently, the grass area is solid mud. Not very conducive to having a, a nice setting. We would like to improve that and develop a patio area. And the next request is for some patio furniture. To put there. Currently, you've seen one wire barrel. We have a hodgepodge of furniture that we provide. For the concessionaire. They pay us a monthly rent on the, on the building and we provide the building. We would like to upgrade the outdoor patio furniture so that people feel comfortable and, and want to sit outside and encourage that. A forestry mower. We are seeing more and more invasive species all the time. Bush honeysuckle being one of the biggest culprits. This forestry mower would fit on the front of our existing skid steer. And we would be able to get sunlight to the forest floor. So what happens is these understory plants, they can live in lower light conditions. In a forest shade out the, the, the forest floor so that there's no herbaceous layer. And it really contributes to erosion and no other things will grow underneath those invasive species. So we want to get in there with the forest more, get sunlight to the forest floor and then we can maintain it with the use of fire. But the only other option to control these is hand cutting and. That's a hugely labor-intensive undertaking. This would allow us to get into those areas that we can access with the skid steer. We can hand. Take care of them by hand. The other is that we can't get to it with forestry mower. Vault latrines. We would like to add one at Whitewater Canyon and another one along the Heritage Trail. We currently have. Two, four restrooms along the thirty mile long Heritage Trail. So you got to bike quite a ways to get to a restroom. So we would like to add another latrine near Bud Road and one at Whitewater Canyon. One of our biggest. Impediments at Whitewater Canyon for taking school groups and, and other groups out there is. They won't go out where there's not a restroom facility. So we would like to add one out there. And I think the other users to the area will appreciate that too. That's another comment we get. Quite often is that we need a, a facility, restroom facility out at Whitewater. Land Acquisition Fund. We've been able to make some really key acquisitions through the Land Acquisition Fund that you've. Funded in the past. We've acquired additional land at Bowstring Wildlife Area for access and, and stream improvements. And we also acquired the Heritage Pond Campground through this, this fund. From the city of Sageville and also are in the process of acquiring some property at Interstate Power Forest Preserve. To improve parking and safety along Old Davenport Road there. So this is a, a really important fund for us. To be able to. Quickly respond to needs in our parks. Get additional space, but it also allows us to apply for other funding to, to leverage those dollars much more. Bangston Pond. So in the past couple of years, we've built a pond out at Ring Neck Ridge. We also built a pond out of Miller McGrath Wildlife Area. While those are great ponds for fishing, they are not very accessible. Especially Ring Neck Ridge Pond. It's probably a good half mile hike back to the pond. Wasn't our first choi- choice for the location, but the whole Ring Neck Ridge leans that way. So it was the only place for a pond. So we would like to develop a fishing pond, a high-quality fishing pond at Bangston Park. Where we would have easy access for, for everybody. It is very near the parking lot. We, we could develop this area, provide a really high-quality fishery and for people to very easily access. I didn't have the courage to update this slide today. I was afraid that if I tried to upload pictures to this, I might not have any presentation. But this is a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars for Heritage Trail connections. And, and the main thing there. Is with the development of the pedestrian trail along Heritage Trail or the West John Deere Road, we're going to need to make that connection. On the other side of Highway three with the Heritage Trail. We also need connections at Farley. The city of Farley has, has. Asked us about connecting with a trail to their park. The city of Dyersville also is interested in. Completing the trail into the city of Dyersville. Currently, the trail starts up Commercial Club Road. Forget the name of that road. But anyway, we have the trailhead, the pavilion and everything, but the trail doesn't actually start till about three quarters of a mile down that road. So this would provide connections to the Heritage Trail, including the addition of the pedestrian trail along West John Deere Road. Water Trails. Water Trails are exceedingly popular. We have. Applied for a water trail grant, water trail planning grant with the Iowa Department of Natural Resources. Our department of natural resources has hired Stan Tech Consulting Group to develop a water trail plan. So that water trail. Planning Grant has just kicked off. Last month, we were developing committees to work on the North Fork and Macokada. The Little Macokada and Leito Creek. And we will be having public. Engagement meetings, meetings with landowners. And as part of this grant, they will be developing four accesses to these waterways. So they'll be designing them, giving us cost estimates. So these will be ready to build structures. And so I'm asking for a hundred thousand dollars to help fund those first initial four water trail accesses. The Swiss Valley Park Stream Restoration is currently underway. The first phase. We were unable to get the second phase completed or under contract because of the. The bids came in higher than expected. We are asking for two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars to complete that stream. the bids came in higher than expected. We are asking for two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars to complete that stream restoration project would take us from I don't know, between the Walnut Shelter and the campground is where the current project will be ending. But this will take us all the way through the campground to White Top Road and will stabilize all the stream banks and put in stream habitat in protection so that we don't have sloughing stream banks and reconnect the, really the floodplain with the stream. Finley's Landing upgrades. This is in our long range plan. This hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars will will improve the access to Finley's Landing through parking and access to the sandbar out in front of the park. You can see, you know, Finley's Landing numbers have remained high. They've always been high. But since COVID, Finley's Landing has become an even more popular destination. It is the only access to a sandbar that you can get to by a boat, I think within a fifty or sixty mile radius of Dubuque. So extremely important access to the Mississippi River for folks that do not have access to a boat. That's the last one? I think one of the things that I ran right past were our seasonal wages. So I did have a discussion with Don with Human Resources about our seasonal wages and our trail crew, we pay them eight dollars and twenty-five cents an hour. Our conservation aides, our college age kids, we've been paying them ten to eleven dollars an hour, ten dollars starting out. They get a fifty cent raise for each year they come back. And then our grounds maintenance positions pay thirteen dollars an hour. We need to adjust those wages and I've talked to Don and she agreed that a two dollar per hour adjustment for all of those would cost seventy-five hundred dollars for an amendment to FY twenty-two for a half a year and would cost fifteen thousand dollars for FY twenty-three to jump each one of those positions by two dollars. So that means our range for conservation aides would be twelve to thirteen dollars an hour. The grounds maintenance would be fifteen to sixteen dollars an hour and the trail crew would be ten, ten dollars and twenty-five cents an hour. So I just think we need, we really need to have that increase for our seasonal wages. Otherwise, I do not think we'll be able to attract any help this summer. We had great difficulties getting positions filled last year. We didn't actually fill all our positions because people didn't want to work for that much money and some of the folks I talked to didn't want to work forty hours a week also. So we're considering to move into more of those twenty-four hour week positions as well, kind of deal with the existing workforce that we have.
I definitely wouldn't have any issue with raising the wages up if it's statewide, nationwide issue with workforce. And obviously eight seventy-five, they can go to McDonald's and make more than that. So definitely get that raised up.
Well, you know, we want to attract people that want to get into a natural resources or conservation field. But at the same time, there's going to be a lot of options out there if we're not competitive in the wages.
Sorry, go ahead.
Is it time for questions?
Yes.
Okay. Brian, great presentation. Thank you. When we look at the budget with EB Lyons, I was at Jason Benglender's standing room only presentation, really amazing, great, great energy. School kids are going to just love everything about that guy. He's just, it's great. He's, he's a good fit. And so we had, as you know, he had a lot of dropped technology. You know, there were moments, I think three, that were pauses that I'd like to see us figure out somehow. So in that budget, EB Lyons, I think you said it was twenty-seven thousand dollars. I'd like to have you just look at that to make sure that we're properly addressing budget needs there, whether we need to do something with our own IT or whatever's happening. I think that would just be something I'd like to have you look at, make sure that's included. Do you need something more for that or is that something you're already going to address?
We're already looking into it and unfortunately, you know, Jason had tested out the system before his program and I don't know if all the people that got there trying to get on wifi affected it, but it was working great prior to the public showing up and then it crashed. So yeah, we'll be working with Nathan and the IT to help us out. They've been great so far, getting us, you know, the phones up and running and we had no internet there. They were able to get that up and running and so working with Nathan and his crew, I think we can get it figured out.
There's, you know, you're doing programming there and there's tremendous interest from the public. The events that I've been attending there have been far exceeding what I would think would draw citizens. A lot of them are gray haired folks like me. So it's really broad appeal to the whole community. So I'd like to see us make sure that we're not short sighted in that. A couple of questions about the Heritage Trail fencing. You said that's a fifteen, you do that yearly. I would rather have you not do that as a capital improvement. If that's a budget item, it just needs to be a line item. I, I mean, I, those are the kinds of things I'm thinking that's more operational, in my opinion. The Land Acquisition Fund, my question there is what is the balance in that account? This is the largest request you've ever made in my, in my years on the board.
I'd have to look. We've done some drawdowns on that. I think we're right around two hundred and fifty thousand. Right now.
Right. And this request is for
Yep, additional two hundred and fifty thousand. And I'm sure you've seen the prices of land lately that they're accelerating at a really, really high pace. And in order for us to be responsive and nimble, most people don't want to wait around and give us a year or two to try to raise grants and donations. This is, makes it very easy for us to acquire property that otherwise we would have a difficult time getting. And things we've gone for so far have been really rough ground, stream accesses, parking improvements and we have not pursued any farm ground or anything. We have one addition to one of our wildlife areas right now we're looking at and a couple other projects in the, in the making.
Right. And there's lots of things right now been introduced to state lunch is like your two about you know, flat tax and sales tax. You know, realignment and things too. So more to come there. Did you, are you getting an updated balance?
Yep. Still just only three hundred and forty-four thousand is where we're at.
So three hundred and forty-four thousand and then we're going to add another quarter million dollars to that?
Yes.
And we don't have anything specific in mind? With the money?
We do have a couple of properties specifically in mind that I
A strategic plan calls out for adjacent land to our existing parks. And then obviously unique properties. And so if you look at the twenty-one current parks we currently have land adjacent to that would be the first priority.
Yep, that's that's by far the highest priority is expanding our existing areas that we have, not, not adding new ones.
Okay, to the ATV, excuse me, Heritage Trail, the connectors at Dyersville, Farley, South John Deere. The Heritage Trail at Dyersville, they would like to see that be paved. Is there anything in this budget or improvements that talks about paving any portion of Heritage Trail?
No, but I do, I tried to get ahold of Mick, Miko from Dyersville late last week and we weren't able to hook up, but I will be reaching out to him again to talk to him more about that.
But you're not asking for any funding for that? That would be something that would come before us as an operational increase, a capital improvement or something?
Yes, yep. So currently as they expanded that industrial park out through Dyersville, there was no basically the Heritage Trail was where the road is now. So there's no trail there. So people have to bike down the road to get to the Heritage Trail. So that is one of the things we'd like to, to look at improving so that people are off of the road. Not biking down the road.
And then the last question that I have, and maybe it's more of a comment, but you know, I remain in the dark about other opportunities or another opportunity for bond referendum. We were so close. And I don't know how to begin that conversation. So I bring it up is, is there a budget need? Is the board, Conservation Board looking at that? Do you, do you, I don't, I don't, I just don't know where you are with that. Or if we're just all walking away and saying, you know, it's just not going to happen. Are you discussing it?
Yep. So as the, as the board, we have not had that conversation yet about what our next step is and and I think we should probably have that in the near future, possibly at the next meeting. We were very close, fifty-nine point two percent. I think there were some things that I could have did better to get us over the hump. I think we had a public meeting out in Dyersville. And I wish we would have had more of those. I think there was a good conversation we had and we did a short presentation on what the money would be used for and then had a chance for the public to ask us questions and I wish I would have done more of those because I felt, I felt like it was really well received and and answered a lot of the questions that people had. Give a chance to, you know, I think pretty much all of our board members were out there and were able to talk to the public and I think that would be important in the future going forward.
I mean, my request would be that when you're ready, there's a work session with the supervisors because you know, how we, how we get this done. I think I certainly have interest in having the, to get back to the voters answering the questions that they had. They perhaps didn't feel they had enough information. Well, let's make sure that we're, we're more clear and we identify, you know, top priorities instead of a three hundred page document. So and then that brings me to another, my, I guess my final question at this point, which is your need for a grant writer. I don't know who, how do you, it's impossible to get these, these funding requests out the door. This will be the third year that I've asked you about a grant writer contracting those services. You're not the only department looking at this need. I mean, we've, it's just everywhere. We're all talking about how can we increase our access to more grant funds? And your department with the completed strategic plan, I mean, there's just, there's so many things, Brian, and I don't know. I just, where is that? Is your board discussed that?
We have not discussed it. That would be something that we can bring up and discuss.
Maybe you can talk about, we have applied for numerous grants over a series of years, some in the millions of dollars.
Yep. So we've had some pretty good success and great writing. There's not a ton of opportunities through the state right now for, for grants. But I think with our completed plan, that does give us some some, a lot more leverage and gives us a lot more to connect those, those grant applications with, to back up those applications. We do have a volunteer that started working with us that is working on some grant applications to nonprofits. One of the things we're looking at is accessibility in getting a type of wheelchair that's motorized so that people can come out and utilize that to get on our trails. And that's a high priority for me. I just think accessibility is really important. So that's one of the things we're looking at is, and we also
In our consultant's budget, we could use that for grant writing, right?
Yeah. So we did, we did reach out to ECIA. They wrote the trail grant for us. And that was covered through, I believe, some stimulus money or some America Recovery Plan funding, but they did write that grant. We got a seventy thousand dollar water trail planning grant with the ECIA's assistant writing that grant for us. They did not charge us for that. So I think I'm kind of the last of the dying breed. When I write my own grants and they go into the scoring committees, I think they like that to some degree, but I'm the only one that does my own grant writing from the conservation words. But so that is something that we can discuss and look into doing more of.
Well, I mean, when you're ready, I guess is all I can say. I, you know, I think the, hopefully the auditor will come to us with a budget request. There might be some unique things that we can do combining that need among other departments as well. So I appreciate all you're doing, Brian. I mean, you're, you're, you're obviously on it and do you know how much these, all of your, there's twenty-seven requests here. Does anybody have a total?
I believe it's one point six million dollars.
And how does that compare to last year?
It's about the same.
And your operational budget has not increased by much?
Fifty-three thousand and that includes EB Lyons, so. And then the, the wages would be an additional fifteen thousand dollars for FY twenty-three and seventy-five hundred dollars for FY twenty-two. For the seasonal wage adjustment.
Right. Thank you.
Thank you. And I forgot to mention Nate. Nate Sisler is on, on Zoom. Nate did a lot of the preparation for the PowerPoint program. So thank you, Nate.
See if there's any questions or comments from the board members.
Do any of the Conservation Board members have anything to add?
I'm George Davis, one twenty South Grandview Avenue, a member of the Conservation Board. I was out of town a couple of weeks ago and read the Telegraph Herald and Claro Manufacturing was adding a big addition and hours later, Wright High was adding a hundred employees. Fifteen minutes later, Hormel was adding employees. Simon's pet, they're talking about a big addition. Amazon's hiring two hundred employees and earlier in November, I met with the governor's representatives and employers in Western Dubuque County about workforce and those, the twenty employers that were at that meeting were short approximately five hundred workers. We've got big challenges with workforce in Dubuque County, not only with bringing in new workforce, but keeping our workforce that we have here. For young people, one of the top things that they look for and they migrate to is when they're looking for a place to go is what are the amenities for outdoor recreation? And I, I really believe strongly that anything we spend to try to upgrade our amenities in Dubuque County, we've got, we've got some great opportunities and great things, but they could be much better and anything we can do to help improve those, I'm all in favor of. And I support the budget and I think Brian does a great job and so I think anything that we spend on these programs to help our outdoor recreation and parks is going to come back in a much larger return on investment than what we put into it. So thanks for your attention. Thanks for all you do for Dubuque County and thanks for your service.
Thanks, George. Do you have anything, Jay, or? I don't. Maybe the other Zoom, the other one else on the board, from the board has any other questions or?
Hi, Jackie Kerr, new board member. So I wasn't involved in a lot of this planning stuff, but I do want to thank Brian for his presentation. And I think it's very exciting to think about all of the things that are forthcoming in the, this year and the new fiscal year. And there are a lot of possibilities with these projects that he's proposing. I also support it and I'm excited to see what we can do.
Thank you. Anyone else would like to address the board? Stella, just remind us what you would, your general expectations for budget for the supervisors.
So we've structured our agendas and our budget meetings where you can make decisions at any point in time during these budget presentations. Also, next week, we'll have our final budget work sessions on Monday and Thursday. And those will heavily be focused on decisions as well. So anything that hasn't been discussed or decided through these budget work sessions will be done next week. So you have the opportunity to make decisions as you choose, or they'll be brought back to you next week.
Okay, thank you. Obviously, sitting on the Conservation Board, this is the second or third time I reviewed it. And this general process has been pretty good. We have the strategic plan. We had a special session with the Conservation Board for the budget specifically and to discuss these projects and prioritize a variety of other projects. And I do believe it was unanimous four or five vote, depending on attendance, for the actual budget itself. So I'm, I'm comfortable moving forward. Just curious where my colleagues are.
I'd be comfortable with moving on the budget portion of it. All the extras, I think maybe you need a little more review. But as far as the budget without the improvements, that would be definitely great to move. I think it's pretty close to last year's, which is very good. Appreciate you keeping the expenses down.
Yeah. The only thing we really adjusted were the, the electric and the fuels and the, in the disposal. We just-
And you can't control that.
Yeah.
And your thoughts?
Well, I'm not, I'm not sure what you mean, Harley. In terms of the, you know, the operational budget, I think is, is fine. That's not something that we're necessarily looking at today. What's before us are, you know, twenty-seven requests for, I mean, obviously, all of conservation is before us today. But I detailed the twenty-seven requests for improvements or, you know, the improvement requests. And, and I don't know if you have questions about those or need more information about, about, about those. I, I think Brian's answered all of my questions. But I've also, you know, I've got three years of experience. And these, I don't find any of these to be outside the norm. It would be wonderful at some point to have all the old equipment done with so we could continue to do projects and not replace, you know, still some, you know, equipment that, that needs replacing. I'd like to see that get onto a, you know, a schedule for some replacements. Do you have questions about these improvements, Harley?
I guess, like the Bankston Park one, I guess, what's your plan for restructuring that pond? I guess I was a little lost on that one.
We'd have to hire a consultant to come in and, and give us a design and the improvements for that. But I think we would need to extend the dike on the lower side and a new control structure. I think presently, we have about three feet of depth in the pond. And we need to do some soil testing and, and boring to determine-
It's not spring fed though, is it?
Yeah, yeah. It, it used to have a more diverse fish population. And I'm not sure what happened there. But it's currently too shallow to support, so we need to get another eight to ten feet of water depth in there to support a quality fishery.
Okay. I'd be comfortable with it. This is only my second budget session. Obviously, my colleagues have had more experience with it. If, if they're fine with it, I would be fine with it. The projects are all good projects. I know we have to keep upgrading the vehicles and equipment. That's just standard. You have to do that.
There's nothing wrong. I, I mean, I think we have consensus. I know Supervisor Wickham helped create the budget as part of the Conservation Board. I, nothing stands out to me as out of line. It isn't, it is a, a significant increase over last year in terms of land acquisition. But, I mean, I, I do think we need to have the funding ready. And there are things that, you know, that do tend to come up. So having several hundred thousand dollars, I think, at hand is a good idea. We also don't have a lot of control over land acquisition. That's a, a different code section. Maybe somebody can remind me about that. But I think we're supposed to kind of do what they're asking for land acquisition fund. Maybe somebody can help me get context for that. Jay, is that correct?
I'm not exactly what you're referring to, although I know the Conservation Land Acquisition Fund is, is a separate account. Brian, do you have a comment?
So the Conservation Board has the authority to acquire land in name of Dubuque County. The, the Board of Supervisors has control of the budget. So it is, while the Conservation Board has their own authority to go ahead and, but acquire land, it's kind of a dual relationship there because-
It's understandable. You have to have some money. Somebody says, I'm going to sell this ten acres. It's right next to art. You got to have the money to buy it, or somebody else buys it, it's gone. You don't get another chance.
It's, it's an opportunity question. It's being able to move on things in a timely manner. Most people don't want to wait for-
Well, I think for transparency purposes, it might be good if, if the Conservation Board could have some discussion about how, you know, how big do you think that account should grow to, right? So you have a balance of three hundred and forty-four thousand. You're asking for another two hundred and fifty thousand. I know I heard Conservation Member, Board Member, George Davis speak. And I'm, I know that land is expensive, but I think citizens might just generally have an idea. It's, it's, you know, it's not going to grow to a million dollars, is it? You know, I mean, so we work together like we do with the Board of Health. And we've got to find the numbers that, that fit with the community in which we all live. So if next year you're asked for another quarter million dollars and you tell me you have six hundred thousand in the bank, I just, I just need to know where you're going with it. Is there a bigger plan? And if there is, then that needs to be shared. And I understand real estate purchases are, are, you know, basically not open to the public because it makes land prices change. But so I think we have consensus on this. And, but I'm, I guess I'm signaling that for land acquisition fund, I would need more information to do this again next year.
That's certainly reasonable. We can, we can have that conversation.
That's reasonable, very reasonable request. So would you want a motion on it, Stella?
I can't hear what Stella's saying in the, in the room. But I mean, if, if folks are ready, I am happy to make a motion to approve the improvement request in the sum of one million, six hundred and seventeen thousand, one hundred dollars.
I will second that.
Have a motion and a second to approve the conservation improvements. All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Brian. Thank you, George.
I appreciate the board members on Zoom as well. Jackie, it's nice to see you. And Stacy, good to see you as well. And Nate being present, that makes a great deal of difference. And I see Pat, he's not on video, but I know he's been here. So I appreciate your service as well. It's good work.
Thank you.
Okay, we can go to our next work session, which would be with the Veterans Affairs General Assistance and Randy Renison. Randy, how are you today?
Good, Harley. How you doing?
Good.
I'll begin to start off with the G, or I mean, the VA first. With COVID, kind of took a lot of our outreach stuff away from us. But actually, we've been kind of doing a lot more outreach lately. So go on to the next slide or- We did go down Yellow Ribbon. As everyone knows, the Iowa National Guard got called up last year. So we went ahead and went down the Yellow Ribbon Event down in Iowa City to present VA benefits for the returning veterans that are coming home for the National Guard. As you see, we started a new out program. It's called Outreach Monthly Donuts and Coffee. As everyone knows, with the federal government, it's always changing. So it's a good point with our veterans that we get meet once a month. It's been a very good turnout. We usually average anywhere from ten to up to thirty individuals showing up. We had it at different locations. Majority of the time, we have it at, hold it at the Moose Lodge. But the veterans are very, they have good positive feedback on it and they always look forward to it. I know we're booked all the way up to October, Tammy. So a lot of people are stepping up. We put it out that any local business that want to cater to veterans or any organization that would like to sponsor, by all means, they can. So. Once again, we did our luncheon this year. It was held up at Flor Park. We thought it'd be better to do it outside with the COVID going on still and more people rather be outside. Also, the Combat Veterans Motorcycle Association have been really helpful this year. They did give away twenty turkeys at our location. And then what we did was go ahead and built boxes for veterans, potatoes, all the Thanksgiving gifts. And so we handed them out. I think they, their final count was a hundred and twenty total turkeys throughout Eastern Iowa they served. Just two weeks ago, they actually stopped by the office and they dropped off roughly about eighty pounds of deer meat, sausage and hamburger for our food pantry. That really goes very well with the veterans that come down and use their food pantry. Once again, we did our spaghetti dinner up at the Moose Lodge. A very good turnout again. A lot of the veterans, like I said, they like to engage in a lot of these activities to, to see what's going on. This program here, it turns out roughly, I think we've had a hundred and fifty. And then we also took roughly about twenty, twenty-five to-go plates up to Sunny Crest and some of the nursing homes that some of the veterans couldn't come down to. So we took, they, people came down and picked them up and took them with them. Once again, we helped out with the Veterans Outreach Pheasants Forever. As you can see in the bottom picture, that's one of the groups. They had three different groups that hunt during that day. They kind of limited their activities due to COVID. They kind of want to spread them out and stuff. But once again, the veterans were out there. My staff was out there to ask any questions or provide any services if they needed it at that time. And of course, a lot of the school kids like to bring down their artwork and then we take them down to Iowa City because they'd have their restrictions that everything had to be in a plastic bag. So we bag them and then we'll go down to Iowa City and drop them off. Judith Johnson and her staff down there really appreciate it when we stop them, drop them off to Iowa City VA. And veterans that are injured are down there in the hospital. Also, I'd like to bring up two other new outreaches. We are teaming up with Honor Flight. That's a big push that just came back here to Dubuque. First two flights are going to be May twenty-third and twenty-fourth. So we're helping the Vet Freedom Center and Radio Dubuque put the information out on that. And then also, we're approached by Christina Shower. She's an RN up at Mercy and she's a veteran herself. And a lot of the activities that a lot of organizations around here do kind of cater to the male veteran population. So she requested with our commissioners to do, it's called a paint and brush. It's going to be down in Millwork District and she's going to give roughly, at first she said ten female veterans. Now it's up to about twenty. So it's kind of kicking off and she wants to start doing like a veteran, female veteran outreach group. So we're teaming up with her. So that's another, two, two new outreaches that we're going to be working with this year. As you see, I always give you the little heads up and I did attach some our Des Moines Regional Office. That's where pretty much the VVA, the Veteran Benefit Administration, once a month, they'll send out a spreadsheet just like this, breaks it down, how many people in the state of Iowa are receiving a hundred percent, so forth, percentage, and all the way down to non-service connected pension and so forth. But as you can see, the amounts are pretty good. But the big one that we always look at is our, if you want to go to the next slide. The county, I don't know if you guys, did you guys receive this? Oh. Okay. Well, this year alone, or actually right now in Dubuque County, we're roughly bringing about one point nine million dollars in a month into the county to give veterans their benefits and stuff. So, you know, some people ask, you know, where you get these numbers? It's actually coming from the VA itself, out of the regional office. So it really helps out. I think last fiscal year, we started about one point seven. So there is still a need for our office to help veterans get their claims and benefits in. We just received the two, when they went Blue Water to Brown Water Navy, two spouses, one received over half a million dollars and the other one received over seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars back pay, so tax free. So it really helps out to do all the paperwork and everything. So go on to the next one. That's pretty much about the VA side of the house. Is there any questions? With the budget itself, we're not asking for anything new. We want to keep everything the same. For some reason, of the assistance side of the house, we really didn't really do, we did a few, but not as much as we usually did in the previous. I don't know if it's because people are receiving their compensation. But, or if it's because of the COVID or whatever. But so we, the Board of, or the Board of Commissioners kind of want to just keep everything the same amount just to play it safe if, you know, we don't want to be shorthanded, the veteran, there are their families still. But, I mean, we're just not changing anything within, from last year's request that we did for the VA side of the house. Is there any questions on Veterans Affairs?
No problem. I have nothing.
No, thank you for all the community outreach. It's good to, you, you can hear about things throughout the year, but it's good to have a summary of the different activities you're doing throughout the community. So-
And we put a lot of it on our Facebook page and that's what gets a lot of information out to a lot of individuals and stuff. So, and we did do others for the Thanksgiving, then we decided to do, because Toys for Tots. It was Bryce Parks' call. He just did it at the Community Center on Central. And so they had one south location. They didn't want to travel all around. But we did do food baskets for twenty, twenty veterans. And then we also had some American Legion, Sons of American Legion, they all volunteered and picked up a couple of families. So with the V, or that's pretty much tells you about the VA vouchers. We did, we did eight rental and fifteen utilities last, last year for assistance. So I mean, like I said, I don't know if it's the compensation, but hopefully that is helping veterans out. But, or, you know, they are not looking for assistance at this time because they're, they don't want to come out of their homes. But that's pretty much about the basic on that. So-
Randy, can I ask you a question? It's Ann on Zoom. Do you know, you know, our, our requests are down, which that's fine. It's good to always know where we are. Do you know if that's been the experience in other similar sized counties? Has that been the experience in your personal and in your colleagues?
I think at fall school, when we went, a lot of people said, like, their assistance were down too. I don't know if it's, I, like I said, you know, if all county veteran service officers are doing their job and getting benefits for their veterans. I mean, every time someone gets a decision letter, I always tell them, come back and we'll discuss it. And there might be more benefits out there. So I don't know if it's because of the COVID or people are just, you know, watching their money and staying in and not spending their money. It's hard to tell.
How has, has access to brain health counseling, how has that been going?
Oh, the brain health with the Iowa City VA, I mean, I can't really speak on their behalf, Iowa City VA and the Dubuque Seabock. But they're really pushing virtual. And pretty much if you don't want to go to Iowa City and you just want to stay home, they give you a tablet and you do everything at home. There, that's their big push for, especially the rural, especially the far- There, that's their big push for especially the rural, especially, uh, the far northeast corner. It takes, you know, about three hours for them to get down to Iowa City. So they're doing a lot of virtual training. Uh, or not training, but their, uh, brain health and a bunch of other stuff. So.
So the brain health therapy you think is happening on through telehealth?
Yep. And they'll give them, they'll, they'll, they'll ask the veteran if they want a Samsung tablet or a brand new Apple iPad. And they'll, they sent them and then, uh, if the veteran is up in a nursing home and they really don't know how to operate it. They'll send a one of them programs there and then all they gotta do is turn it on, push the button. That's all they put on there. One app to Iowa City and that's it. So.
Hillcrest, uh, their new walk-in center, they were here last Monday and presented to us and um, they said they have found a need to add a veterans, like a coordinator. So someone who, so do, are you involved in that? And can you tell us from the county side what that means?
Yeah, the vet veteran coordinator, they actually came down last week and met with me, uh, right, right over lunch and they're very adamant. Um, what's good about this program is that they will help veterans and their entire family. Whereas in the VA's health system, it's only the veteran that gets, uh, the brain health, uh, help pretty much. Uh, so they, it really helps them out because there are some family members that want to come down and do a family counseling or whatever. And unfortunately with the federal VA, you have to be a veteran to get that kind of a help. And so, um, we kind of refer them out to Hillcrest or the actual vet center down out of, uh, Moline. And they'll come up and talk to veterans too and their families.
Very good. Thank you.
Any other questions on?
Anything. Thank you.
Okay. Uh, well, since the letter's up, uh, we did, the commissioners did sit and talk, uh, their request for our, um, cost of living, uh, pay raise for this new fiscal year. I didn't bring a copy with me and I'm sorry about this, but they're just requesting with the cost of living that the actual nationwide got a 5.9%. Uh, they're just requesting, uh, what was it? 5% for, uh, especially with us, uh, working through COVID and, you know, keeping our doors open. Doing a lot of outreach, then also taking on general assistance again. They believe that, you know, we're going on and be beyond and above our capabilities trying to, you know, make Dubuque a better place of connections with both GA and VA. So, uh, they had a meeting and then they all signed off on it. Well, Ray did. He's our chairperson, but we got our commissioner Sharon here. If you have a question with for Sharon, uh, but they believe that, you know, our staff deserves a 5%. So, and that's pretty much about it.
I would have a question for you, um, Randy. Do you know, again, just how, how are, would a 5% increase be relative to other counties? Do you know what's happening?
Well, the other counties, uh, that they're always fluctuating. A lot of, some of the counties use their allocation funds that, uh, the state gives each county the $10,000. Uh, we try to not try to dip into it to do, like any pay for the outreach or anything like that, uh, like some of the other counties. We'd rather give that money to back to the veterans. Uh, that's why, the way we look at it. That 10,000 should go towards veterans, uh, outreach or helping them try to do like the paint and brush for the female side of the house or the pheasant hunt, uh, or spaghetti dinner and stuff like that. So, um, it's kind of hard to explain some of the other counties without actually sitting, uh, because some of the, some of the counties don't like to talk about their salaries and stuff because some think they're, you know, underpaid. I mean, I can't speak on their behalf, but, uh, they say, you know, they, they're in a county that only does 32 hours, but they're working 50 hours a week. And so they're underpaid. That's when usually our Mike Mortenson, our president will tell them, you know, go to board of supervisors with your commissioners and request, you know, more hours or more pay.
Thank you.
Do you have anything?
I do not. Thank you, Andy. Thank you.
Oh, is the, uh, general assistant?
Oh, that's what we're going to. Everyone knows with the GA, it came back into our office in beginning of July. Uh, we did start doing that point of entry. Uh, so far this is what we completed. Uh, we did send out two other applicants today. Uh, one called back after he picked up the application and he thinks it's not your business to know what, who, who his full name is, social security number, how much he makes. So he withdrew his application, but, uh, Catholic charities, Hillcrest, uh, as you can see, uh, we're, that's who referred a lot of them to us. Uh, we kind of been keeping track just to play it safe that if someone came in here saying that we're not actually doing the GA work. But with the, uh, point of entry and the application that you guys approved, I mean, I think it works great. Uh, we get them in, get them out, uh, try to do it quickly. Uh, a lot of times some individuals will request 800, but they know we only can do 475 for a family or 350 for a single individual. And so the Hillcrest and them, they'll, they'll help pick up the other costs. And so I think we're doing a lot more helping for the general population than, uh, as you see with the funerals, that's still kind of a big one. I know, uh, here in a while, uh, I've been doing some investigation, uh, to kind of maybe tweak that policy a little bit. Uh, I reached out to a couple of the funeral home directors and a couple of them mentioned they would like to reword some of the comments that we have in our policy. And then also maybe take some stuff away a little bit. But I know me and Ed Raver are working on that to come up the blueprint and we already informed everyone that the budget's going on right now. So it's going to be a little while after the budget before we bring that up. But this is what we have done so far with the GA vouchers. We did 37 so far, but as you see, majority of them been funerals. And we did one more today at direct cremation.
And this is for the current fiscal year starting in July. So just seven months.
From July till now.
Okay. Any comment? Uh, we had a change. So a change again. And so, uh, how has that gone since July, uh, working with other entities and, uh, just overall general assistance since we made the change from a?
Well, I think it, it's been going really good, especially that point of entry. Cause they'll call us and we'll say, you have to go through the point of entry because as, uh, the policy states, you know, we're the last payee. And majority of these agencies know that if they give them a denial, they can by all means reach out to us. Uh, you know, we don't want people to just start calling up the county and just, and then, uh, the point of entry, actual the spreadsheet actually has got a lot of good information on there. So we can put in, hey, we mailed out this application or the county did, you know, gave X amount of dollars to this individual to, uh, take care of their rent or utilities. And so, and then you can see who helped else, who helped, helped else, else, uh, helped out also. And I know the point of entry, they just had a meeting and they're kind of talking about the ma- playing a max on how much help everyone will be giving. I believe, uh, I think I saw Ed on there. I think they said roughly a thousand dollars. We, the max that anyone could get assistance from not only our location, but all the other agencies.
Do we have a dollar amount on those seven rental assistance?
Well, I think most majority have been the max, the 475.
Okay.
And with the GA, once again, we're not, uh, changing the budget or anything. We're going to keep it the same. I don't really see, for some reason, direct cremation's been very popular. And that's why we kind of reached out to a couple of the, uh, nursing or the, not the nursing homes, the funeral homes. Cause they even said that there's an uptick in direct cremation. A lot of people are going that route. So.
The, the funerals and those numbers look generally on par with previous years. But the rental assistance at seven is significantly less than previous years. And I don't know where the utilities assistance is at all. So looking at previous budgets, uh, you know, rental payments were over 40,000 and utilities were 27,000. And there's some other contributions. So, uh, my question to my, my colleagues and certainly general assistance is we've made a change. It seems like the county's participation related to general assistance, at least through seven months, we're not done. Not done through the year is significantly less.
I think it's being run the way it's supposed to be run now. As we being the provider of last. Of course, I think the, obviously the coordinated entry is working very well. And it's getting spread out about among all the agencies instead of the way it was where we were just kept paying and nobody else was.
And it also helps out is that we can actually see other agencies that helped the individuals before. And, you know, and the, the narrative, you know, I may be out of line, but you know, when someone says, you know, they have not worked since June, now they're looking for rental assistance because they run out of unemployment. It's like, well, go through the point of entry and see if these other agencies help you out first. And then by all means, you know, but like I said, we had the one today that he refused that he, he doesn't think it should be the county's, the information that you requested, the, his no full name, social security number, how much he's making, so forth like that. He thought it was none of your business. So he withdrew.
So what I see for the 2021 budget, which currently in here that still provide is we had a lump sum of general assistance for 120,000. At this pace, we'll only be using about 15% of that. So I guess my question to my colleagues are, is, is, was the intent to slow down or you know, really limit the amount of assistance we're providing in rent and utilities? Cause that's what it appears is happening.
Well, if I might comment, i- if I might, well, that was not the intent. It was truly to return to the idea that we were, we were last resort. And also while we have experienced changes in where, where we have placed the, um, administration of this, other nonprofits have also experienced changes in, in what role do they serve? And, um, you know, we operate in a community where there's been tremendously more resources, federal and state um, allocated to other entities that maybe didn't have funding for things before. City of Dubuque's been able to offset some of their own, um, you know, water sewer, um, delays and late payments. So that would normally, and in, in any other year, a lot of that might be coming to us. But, uh, I think for the first time, the county is actually using well, the idea of a coordinated entry that there's one call. In fact, I called it this morning for, um, a gentleman I met over the weekend who's homeless. And into really use that one entry system and then let whatever the issue is that presents, you let that agency who's expert in that help first. So anyone related to, you know, um, a, a, a utility shut off that goes directly to HACAP where they have, you know, the best, um, resources from the federal government for that. So I think it's, it's really what we're seeing is, um, primarily a shift in the way these types of payments are made um, through non-pro- nonprofits. I don't know what the budget will be for next year, what our need will be, but you know, I, I think Randy is very accessible to the folks that are in this coalition. Ed Raver's done a stand-up job, really helping Randy any way needed um, to coordinate and make sure the county is fully engaged. So, you know, we've gone on, I think Randy a couple of times. You and I like, how come it's so low? What's going on? What do we need to do? So it's not that we're not concerned. You know, just like Randy said about the veterans, we're not making as many disbursements. I don't think that we're through this enough yet to say that we're not going to be needed. It just feels like it's more streamlined and we just want to make sure that we are a, a quality partner with those other nonprofits. But in the past, it was just overwhelming what we could do. That's my opinion.
Well, just looking at it from a budget and a person, the number of people that the county through general assistance is serving, it is drastically lower than it ever has been during my term. And we consciously made that change. And that change was led by my colleagues. And so I'm just asking, is this the outcome you were looking for? And I heard from supervisor Potoff that in short, uh, pleased with the, the changes and, you know, uh, comfortable with the numbers. I don't want the words in your mouth. Um, we're just serving less people. And so if that was the intent or goal, then we've achieved it. That was not my intent or goal of general assistance. But if these are the budget numbers, because that would lead us to next year. So if this is the run rate, you don't need a hundred twenty thousand dollars if you're only going to award 15,000 of it.
Well, it's kind of just like the, uh, VA side house. We don't know if it's people getting the extra childcare monthly or the other stimulus money or, uh, the other agencies helping out. Uh, I mean, you also don't want to shortchange them, uh, come back, you know, fiscal year 2023, I'm coming in front of you in August asking for an amendment right off the bat because, you know, there's a low ball number out there. I mean, just, just like the VA, we don't know what the future is going to hold.
Yeah. And just the difference is the VA has been the same program.
Yep.
This program has changed and I appreciate your, your group's accommodation with those changes. You've been great. Um, group came back and said, we'll take it. We need to take it. We'll take it. And I, I greatly appreciate that stepping up. Um, you know, and I had led some of those other changes prior to that. So appreciate it. But we did have a change this last fiscal year and the net result is drastically lower participation with the county's general assistance. And so that's the, the comment I wanted to make. And if that's what, you know, the board of supervisors intent was, then we've hit it at least through seven months.
So my intent was to bring us down to where we were supposed to be, the payers last resort. Previously we had money getting thrown out. Anybody that wanted, they were just throwing it out. Now there's a structure. You go through the process and we have all these other organizations that are collaborating with us. And they're all helping. So there's a lot of changes there. There's a lot of changes in the workforce. A lot of these people are getting jobs. They are just self-sustaining. They don't need our help as much. You have 30 burials and I'm sure they average over 2,000 apiece. So that's 60,000 there. So another 30, that's 120, isn't it?
The, the barrels are, are, are on track. In previous years we did 91,000 we did in 2021. So, you know, uh, we, we had a pretty significant last year budget. It's just the utilities and the rent payments are drastically lower.
Yeah, I see that. I just think the requests are obviously lower or a lot of these other entities that we're working with through the process now are picking up more where they weren't. So I think it's working the way it's intended to work now.
Yeah, I'm not going to go in search of a problem. I agree with supervisor Potoff, um, noteworthy and dramatically different. Um, and, and again, we're standing ready. If there's, if there's something we need to do better or differently, we're at the table as a full partner.
Yeah, I just, I just don't think, uh, neither of the supervisors, when we went through this change a year ago, said the intent and we'd be pleased if we served less people from the county. And so that's where we've ended up. And, uh, that's not what was presented as we went through the change that we had from our current administrator to back into the VA GA system. And so, so it's, this is a result we have through seven months. I mean, do we propose changing the budget from 120 to a lesser amount or keep it the same to see what happens after another year? It's only been seven months. I give you that.
I don't have a crystal ball, so I would be in favor of leaving it the way it is until we see what we end up with. Things can change quite rapidly.
It's cool. You also got to re-realize that, uh, the previous policy, a family of could get up to $2,000 assistance and a single individual could get up to a thousand. Now, you made that change to 475 for that fiscal year. I think that's what kind of draws a lot of people. I think that's what kind of draws a lot of people away is because they're looking for twelve, fifteen hundred dollars worth of rent assistance. And they know they're only going to get, you know, and then that point of entry, they, for that kind of amount, they got a different program where they Hillcrest and HACAP and all them actually go into a bigger depth on what really is going on in that family. Which kind of where we don't have to have them come in, sit down and do a budget with them or anything like that. But, I mean, that's a big thing also you got to look into that you went from two thousand dollars down to four seventy-five is the max the county is going to pay. So.
And then we're seven months into it. The start of the year, a lot of these other organizations have money. As they run out of money, then everybody starts getting funneled down to the payer of last resort, to the county.
Anything further?
Anne, anything further?
I, I really trust Randy. Thank you, Randy. And, and Ed's been the coordinator as well. And I think they'll be back if we've got a problem. I appreciate their attention to it.
Good. Thank you, Randy. Does anyone need a break or you want to go into the sheriffs?
I will probably make a motion to recess for eight minutes.
Okay.
Second.
Have a motion in the second to recess for eight minutes. All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye. We will return at three o'clock.
Maybe.
Three o'clock, we called the board of supervisors back in the session. Our next budget session will be with the sheriff's office, Joe Kennedy.
Good afternoon. As, as we spoke briefly earlier. And the PowerPoint was sent out last Friday. We don't really intend on presenting on that. We just sent that stuff out for your information. And if you have any questions, we'll be happy to answer them, but we only have an hour. So we want to kind of focus on the, the needs of the department versus, you know, going over the, the power, same, basically the same PowerPoint that we presented last year. So did you have any, did you have a chance to look at it? And I guess for Jay and Harley, did you guys have, have any questions on anything that was in it?
I went through it. I didn't have any questions. I see the thirty-six slides. I appreciate all the, the detail you have and the graphs and all those things. So they're very, very helpful to explain what's going on.
Thank you.
I didn't have anything. Anne?
No.
Okay. Well, then we'll go ahead and move on to our asks for the year. So the first thing we have, as you all know, we implemented a body worn camera program about three years ago. At the, the time that initial program, I believe the total cost of it was around a hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars. Fifty-seven thousand, two hundred and forty-two dollars was raised through a, a body worn camera grant by the federal government. And so, and the remainder of that was paid for through some internal funding at the sheriff's office. So we were able to complete that initial project without costing taxpayers any money. Unfortunately, the life of those cameras, because they're exposed to the, the elements and, you know, they're a, a small device. And they are not meant to last forever. Three years is really the, the shelf life. When we bought the cameras, they had a three-year warranty. Our particular brand, it was initially, when we, when we signed the contract, we signed it with L3 Mobile Vision. L3 shortly after we signed the contract was bought out by a company called Safe Fleet. And the cameras were still supported at that point. That company has again been bought out by a company called Coban, which is no longer supporting both our body worn cameras. Or the reason we got those body worn cameras is because the in-car cameras that we have in all of our squad cars were the same brand. And so they, you know, worked together. Coban is not supporting the in-car cameras anymore either. And so now, because this is the, the three-year anniversary anyway, we were going to have to be upgrading those cameras this year at some point anyway. We also are going to have to upgrade the ca- the mobile vision cameras in the car because they're no longer going to be supported by the company. And those in-car cameras, I mean, we've had them, most of those cameras we've had for several years. So I mean, it's, they're not, it's not like we have a new camera that's, that we have to throw out. I mean, you know, most of those cameras, I guess, Dave, how old? Okay. For those of you who are out in the public couldn't hear that, most of those cameras are over five years old. Some of them are, are so old that they're not even HD quality cameras. So they, they've served the county well in their capacity. We've definitely gotten our money's worth out of them. So with that background, our first ask is for purchase of new cameras. For, this is for the body worn cameras. Are the, the car cameras included in this? Okay, so the, the car cameras are included in this. So as I said, the first set of cameras was, we got a hundred cameras for a hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars. And at that point, the, the storage was all in-house. We have servers that had to be replaced at certain times. Usually every three years, we'd had to replace the servers. Now, pretty much all the camera companies that we're dealing with are all cloud-based storage. So that's really not, not an option for us anymore. And so we are, we're looking for what we think is, is probably going to run us about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year for the next five years to maintain our body worn cameras and our in-car camera systems. We still have our, our internal funding source that helped paid for part of those cameras. That is still available. And so we can use that to offset some of that hundred and fifty thousand dollars. We figure, what do we say, about sixty thousand a year? Is that what we said? We, we believe that we can reimburse the county about sixty thousand a year from that source so that we can continue to keep the cost down for the taxpayers. So that they're not paying for the full, you know, a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Depending on which country, the, which company we go with. Some companies have told us that we, we get our brand new cameras on day one. And then at year three, we get another set of brand new cameras within this. Basically, at, for a five-year ask, it's seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. But during that, we've, we get all the storage. We get two cameras. One company has, has said that their, their deal is you actually get brand new cameras on day one. At two and a half years, you get brand new cameras. And then at year five, you get brand new cameras. And whatever their newest product is at the time, that's what you get at no additional cost. So we're, we're going into this in cooperation with the city of Dubuque. Since we all, you know, we, we share a lot of things, so we're going to go into this together. We're also including Brian Preston and his guys so that they can benefit from bulk rate purchase on this. So that's, that's really our first ask is to, it's, it's very much a need for us. Especially, you know, cameras have become such an integral part of law enforcement. Both the mobile vision in the car, which is what started everything. And then now with the body worn cameras, it's, we, it's really something that we really can't do without. So that, that's our first ask on that.
Would you be able to get any cameras through the GTSP grant or?
Well, I think we probably could. I guess probably the sheriff could answer better than I can. But once we determine the company, I think then we can look at doing that. But yeah, that would be the, the intent.
How much is a new camera? Couple of years ago, they were five thousand.
Yeah, fifty-five hundred. Fifty-five hundred.
So one of the questions I had, so I was looking at the five-year schedule. Maybe you clarified this, but I want to make sure I'm understanding it. So it's actually not, you're not purchasing a series of cameras, waiting five years to have another replacement in year two and a half as well within this one.
Yes. So depending on what, which company we go with, Jay, we'll either get one replacement or two replacements. I, I assume the company that has the two replacements is the assumption that we will then continue on with them, get another one, two and a half years and just kind of keep that two and a half year rotation up. So, but yeah, I mean, it, it includes replacement of, of all the equipment on a regular cycle. And then some of the nice features that they have. So we bought new tasers last year. The company that makes those tasers is one of the companies that is, that sells cameras. So they have a feature where if, and it's, it's included in, it's not an extra cost. It's included with this camera where when a, an officer or deputy draws their taser out, it automatically turns on their camera. It's got the software in there to, to sync the two. You know, so you have, you have features like that. You have redaction where you can, you know, cover up a, a person's face. So, you know, if something is going to be getting sent out to the public, you, you know. So there's things in there that are included that add to kind of that expense. But also protect the people's privacy that need to be protected and provide safeguards for the officers and stuff when they're using them. Because sometimes when you're in a delicate situation, you don't have time to think, I need to draw my taser and I need to turn on my camera. You know, it's all done right there. And then you have the whole event as it, as it happened. Because they also have, they're digital, so they're constantly recording. So when you hit that button, it goes back a predetermined amount of time, pre, pre-engagement. So say you have it set at thirty seconds, it goes back and saves everything from thirty seconds prior to when you push that button. So it's, it's really a, an invaluable tool.
Joe, Anne with a question here from Zoom. Your request is for seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars slash a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Is that each year for five years, but then there's going to be sixty thousand dollars paid by you? So I don't I don't really know what number we should include in the budget. Is it ninety dollar, ninety thousand dollars per year?
Well, the the hundred and fifty thousand will have to be paid upfront by the county. So you should probably count on the one fifty and then we'll reimburse you on the backside.
Good point. We normally normally the expenditures come in there and then if there's any grants or other thing that comes under revenue, is that right, Sal?
And that's, if I'm not mistaken, that's how we, when we had the first purchase, the county outright purchased everything. And then it was reimbursed by grants and by us.
And this is in conjunction with the city of Dubuque as well. Roughly, how many, how many cameras would be in that purchase between the two?
Uh, between us and county conservation and the city of Dubuque, I would say we're probably looking at around two hundred and twenty five, two hundred and fifty.
Okay, thank you. So it's gonna work then. Safety numbers.
Yeah, yeah, we hope so. Any other questions on that?
No, I mean, it's a seems like a lot of money, but really it's cheap insurance. One one screw up that it prevents could save more than that easily.
Yeah, I mean, when you think about the millions of dollars some agencies are paying out lawsuits, you know, this is really peanuts sadly. All right. If you don't have any other questions on that, I guess we'll move to the next one.
I thought that was the only one you had.
That's it?
You guys, you should know better than that. So.
I wasn't sure if this was an IT presentation or Sheriff's Department presentation.
D L E C network switches. Our our switches, for many years, they didn't get upgraded as as they should. We're starting to get on a on a cycle where we routinely upgrade them. I think, was it was it five year cycle? Is that what? I don't remember exactly offhand.
I thought it was closer to four.
Was it four? Okay. So our share on this is going to be fifty thousand, just to upgrade the switches within the D L E C. You know, make sure proper IT functioning within the building. So we had thirty thousand in last fiscal year for this and we're just asking for another twenty to be added to that. This is our sand server. This is we use this for most of the the data in our building. It was, this was, we actually brought this last year. It was supposed to be a hundred and fifty thousand dollars last year and then the city decided to to put it off at the last minute. So it was presented last year and then we basically said, don't worry about it on the day of our presentation. So now it's it's due for replacement. So once again, just a regular routine maintenance item that we are, we are going to owe our share on of a hundred and fifty thousand dollars on that.
So that's a fifty fifty split?
Yes. And the reason, the reason that's a fifty fifty split is because with you know, as far as the law enforcement side, the city uses more a larger portion of it than we do. But from the with when we add the jail data and stuff like that, then it brings it pretty close to even. So that's why we're fifty fifty on that.
Joe, is this one of the expenses you have in your like five year plan? I mean, these expenses, the city doesn't budget this, nor do you just it just drops in this year. You have that planned out over time. Isn't that correct?
Yes. And usually, you know, we have, I mean, Sue keeps a spreadsheet of our, you know, our routine maintenance things and what their life cycles are. Unfortunately, it's something like this. I think the last hundred places wasn't, I think it was like seventy five or eighty thousand, wasn't that right? And so obviously you can see the cost of this stuff has gone up significantly. So.
Is this a bigger unit than the one you handle?
You know, I don't know what the size of the unit, do you? I don't, I don't recall if a
Obviously, it's more so.
Yeah, I guess. I would also have that cost.
Your your videos probably take a whole room.
Yeah. So any other questions on that? Next one is cars?
Cars, sorry.
That's okay. So just replacement of three vehicles for a hundred and sixty thousand dollars. And that's a regular replacement item. So I think we're we're to the point where we're just, I think this year we're just replacing squad cars, right? Yeah, so all of our CRD cars, admin cars and everything else like that have all been upgraded or should be good for a couple of years before we have to start getting back into that rotation cycle. So this year, we just need to replace three of our patrol cars. So. Questions for that? Actually, we haven't had too much trouble. I hate hate to say it, but we actually have started just going with state bid and getting them out of Des Moines because they're the only people that can guarantee when we're going to get cars. So it's hopefully that things turn around and we can start sending out RFPs locally again, but with fiscal year budgets and stuff, I can't afford to wait nine months to get a car. So. Let's see, the wireless access controller. I don't remember exactly. Oh, this was for the wifi. Yeah. So our building, we have a little bit of wifi that was installed by the county in our juvenile courtroom for court purposes because they use it for depositions over there and they found that they're really struggling. Sometimes they were trying to log into the network over here because they needed information and stuff, couldn't do it. So Nathan and his guys installed wifi into that room. And so we are, we would like to have wifi installed into the entire building. And it would be a a secure wifi network. It's not going to be open to the public, but we have, we have vendors come in. We have people coming in trying to give us demonstrations of things. They can't log into the internet. If you've, I know, you know, Harley has seen it, you know, and then they're fumbling around, trying to figure things out and it's you know, when we look at it, it's two thousand twenty two, you know, people shouldn't have to fight this. And so because of the secure nature of our network, we're not, we're not going to have a free wifi guest wifi network. It's it's going to be a case where, you know, whoever's allowed to be on it, you know, will have a password protected like that, so we can protect our network. But but we do need to, you know, I guess move into the twenty first century here. With that, so.
Joe, have you confirmed with Nathan that this is, this is the cost? Is he aware of this project?
So this is through, we got this quote from C E C. And so they're kind of our our go to vendor when it comes to city IT stuff. I have not shown it to Nathan. He's welcome to, you know, somebody wants to contact him to stop in, he's welcome to take a look at it. But we we weren't hiding it from him. We just, I just guess, I just never thought to send it to him. So.
Well, I'm, I just, I'm not concerned about that. You just said he did the juvenile courtroom. The old juvenile courtroom redo was Nathan did that. I just wasn't sure, you know.
Yeah, cuz Right. No, cuz that's a little bit different though here because those that had, the county attorneys had to be able to get into the county's network. And so that's why it, we had Nathan do it so that they could get hooked into the county's network. This is going to be through the city network.
Okay, sounds good.
All right, any other questions on that? Another server replacement, this is for the virtual server. This is a regular replacement item, thirty thousand dollars on that. Can't think of anything specific on that that's.
No, you approved it last year for the thirty thousand. This is just our second year asking.
Oh, okay. There, there's multiple virtual servers, my understanding. So, correct?
No, are you on the the server?
Yes.
Yeah, no, please, they're just our
Just our
Four years, yeah.
Yeah. So, yeah, it's just a regular replacement. Any questions? This is a regular replacement of desktop computers. Every year, we, this is, as long as I can share, we've come before the board annually with this request. We rotate our computers out every four years. And so this is just a rotate out for your own computers. Just so you're aware, after we rotate these computers out, we do wipe them and we generally offer them to like W D High School or, you know, the school districts and stuff. The last couple of years, we really haven't had any takers on them, so they just get recycled. So.
We've got our desktop ones.
Those are the desktop ones?
They're the security ones for the
Control room. Oh, the jail control room. Okay. Sorry. My mistake.
Our desk ones are in our expense line.
Those are, okay.
Yeah, they're in our expense, but these are the controlled computers.
The jail control room. Okay. So they serve a bigger purpose, so they let people in and out of the jail. So.
They're like, they're like, for years?
They still, they're still regular replacement. Yeah.
Joe, does the city take care of all your
For those.
Any kind of
Yeah. Yeah. So all of our, anytime we do computer replacements, they're purchased in with the city because the city is a better group rate. So. Any questions on that? This is just year two of our Vertra simulator. Last year, we came to you with a to update the Vertra. It was five years old at the time. The warranty was running out. At that time, the board agreed that we would go on basically a five year lease of the equipment. So they upgraded all that equipment last year. And now this is just year two of that, just to continue that lease and maintenance cycle. Any questions on that?
Does that still reside in the next season bill?
Yes, it does. Okay. So the roof replacement. So we got this approved last year. We were approved for a hundred and eighty five thousand dollars. Because of the increased cost in materials and labor, the quote, the last quotes that we got on it were well over three hundred thousand dollars. We actually have bid opening tonight for the RFP that we sent out for this project. So in about two hours, we're going to find out what people think it's going to cost to replace it. So for this, like you said, we had a hundred and eighty five thousand dollars approved. We also, just a reminder to the board, came to you about a month and a half ago saying that we were abandoning the the other this building project, which was six hundred thousand dollars that we had kind of been carrying for the last couple of years. And so at that time, you know, the board essentially said that a good use for that funding would be to kind of break that up, take part of that six hundred thousand and apply it to this, to this project. So assuming that that's still the consensus of the of the board, that's our intent. Like you said, we'll have a bid opening here in in a couple of hours. So we'll know exactly how much we're going to need to move from that that pot of money into this project line. So but
Mind me what, Rob, was it jail or ELAC or?
Yeah, it's the jail and then the roof that covers the port area where the garage doors are. So everything from basically where the old building stops to the north is all all needs to be replaced. And that's, I think that was a twenty year, twenty year roof. So, I mean, it only ended in twenty years, but this should cover us for a while. Also, though, I will let you know that I think two years, did we say? The seven seventy building will need it to.
Why twenty three? We were gonna
No, no.
Twenty four?
I think, yeah, it was at least
That why twenty four? Do we have a question mark? We don't know how much money.
Okay, so this project, we get it done next year, but next year, or this this year. But next year, we will be coming to you because the other, the remainder of that roof that covers the original part of the building is going to need to be replaced. So just a heads up on that. Any questions on that? Okay. Okay, so last year, we approached the board about expanding our road patrol division. And at that time, we, the discussion basically was that you understood the need and but you couldn't, I guess, guarantee that our five year plan, that year after year, we were going to be able to continue to expand that program. And so at that time, it was decided that until we had completed that additional of of five people to the road patrol, that we would have to come back every year and and make the request. So basically, that's what this, this is part of that request. If the board is in agreement that we can continue to expand the road patrol division, that this would be to the purchase of a of a new vehicle, not not to be confused with the ask from earlier for the replacement vehicles. But this is to add a new patrol car. And then as we agreed last year, the outfit of that vehicle would be out of forfeiture funds. Obviously, the only way we need this is probably going to be our next ask, which is the addition of as we talked about last year, just a reminder. Because we understand the cost of adding deputies versus full time corrections officers, the people that we were going to add to backfill those deputy positions, we're going to be correctional officers and not full time deputies. So so the second ask is, or this next ask is actually for the person that will to backfill, the person that's going to fill that squad car. For the person that will to backfill the person that's gonna fill that squad part.
Joe, can you tell us how that's, can you just give us an update on that? Is it working according to your plan? Um, does it seem to be helping? I know you still have unmet needs, that's, you know, in your slideshow that you're not presenting today, but um, how, how is it going overall with this idea?
Um, well, it it's really tough to tell because um. We had uh, we had five retirements in the last year. And so we are trying to catch up on hiring. And um, so the uh, the people that were added, uh, we. Also tonight, at tonight's meeting, um, you guys are gonna be asked to approve a uh, a person to fill. The open corrections officer spot that we have, and then um. It just, it takes so long for us to find and hire and train people. That it's just taking some time to to get it up to speed, so currently, we have uh, we have twenty. People on the road patrol, um, and we're still uh two positions technically short. We, one person started training last Monday uh for the road patrol, and he won't be done training till probably April. Um, end of April, uh, and then we have the next person, we are hoping can come out in May and start training. So, I mean, it just. Um, our biggest, our our, probably our biggest problem is when we have, uh, because everything kind of feeds from the jail. When we're short bodies in the jail, we can't bring people out to train on road. And then, you know, we can't bring people out to train on road, we can't move people to CID, we can't, you know, so everything kind of starts with. With the jail, and so um, you know, we're trying to get the numbers up to where we can get people out to start getting getting trained. Um, so it's just just taking us a little bit of time. Um, so you really probably haven't seen any noticeable difference to this point because technically. We haven't been able to take advantage of of it to this point.
Well, it's cost uh forty thousand, or I guess wages and none of this, or not that, it's roughly fifty-five, eleven.
Yeah. So, um, that's the cost of adding one corrections officer. Um, so the corrections officer's starting wage is uh, I can't remember the exact number off the top of my head, I think it's around uh twenty-four fifty. Um, so um, that's in comparison to starting deputies' wage, which is closer to twenty-nine. Um, and then that kind of follows through all the steps where um, the the corrections officer generally will make about um, you know, five dollars less an hour. Because the deputy is um, trained, uh trained to a higher degree, they uh, they're trained to carry firearms and things like that, they do transports. They do some things that the corrections officers don't do, so they, that justifies them being paid, so. But that that was the reason why we went the route of the corrections officer uh was. Because we understand that adding five people is a significance, a significant cost increase to the county. But we wanted to do uh, would the best we could to keep the cost uh as low as possible, and so that's why we went this route. And just as um, as a reminder, w- when we calculated out what it would cost after five years. Um, we basically were able to add, uh, at the end of the the pro- the whole program, we will have added. Seven corrections officers uh for cheaper than what we would have been able to add five deputies, so.
No.
I think that's it, isn't it? I believe that is it.
Can somebody show me the final number of what it looks like, all tallied, like we did with conservation?
The sum of the capital requests.
Oh, okay. You wanted, I didn't.
I'm assuming Stella has a total, so we can see what it looks like altogether, so we can discuss whether we're going to approve this or need more information.
And one thing, um, uh, Chief Deputy Rinnick just reminded me, just to put on your radar. Um, our uh records management system over at the sheriff's office that we also share with the city. Um, is coming up on end of life in a couple of years. Uh, I believe fiscal year twenty-five was twenty-four to twenty-five. Um, somewhere in that, um, we were gonna be looking at replacement. Um, and so um, just letting you know in advance. Um, that we're probably looking at uh about a one-point-two million dollar. The last one we got was was about six hundred thousand uh out of the county's pocket to uh, to replace. So, we don't know what we're going with, so we're just tentatively saying it's probably gonna be double. Um, so just to put you on notice that there's gonna be a a pretty significant bill coming uh here within the next couple of years for for that, so.
Stella, on the item that you're screen sharing right now, the first item is a seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars for this budget year, wouldn't we be looking at a hundred and fifty?
Yeah, no. Okay, uh, yes, it would be one fifty a year for the five years, so in total, the seven fifty. So the impact to the budget this year would be one hundred and fifty. But I believe it would be the contract in total of seven fifty.
But year over year, you're looking at an improvement of not one million, seven hundred and twenty thousand dollars, you're looking at, you know, one-one, right? Because I'm gonna take out six hundred thousand dollars, because we're only putting in a hundred and fifty thousand dollars into that line item for body cameras and in-car cameras.
Right, so the line item would be one fifty, but I think you have, you're agreeing to a full request of seven hundred and fifty thousand for the contract.
How is that different than the Vertra simulator, which we're we're in year two?
I think we probably put in last year um one fifty on that Vertra. Because you were, you're approving a full contract to do that, so um, just understanding that you're approving five years. Although, when we put it into the budget, it will go in one year at a time.
Okay, and then how does this look compared to last year's request for improvements?
Well. Those are the motions. So, last year, you approved about one-point-two million in requests from the sheriff's department.
But those, like he's, like Sheriff Kennedy said, the network D-LAC switches are back again. The replacement is just an improvement, I mean, I, I, I think um the sheriff's requests are in line. I don't see anything here that, to me, it doesn't seem anything that that is um extraordinary. Um, it seems like the next step to the things that we've been talking about, plus essentials like the cameras. I, certainly, I support the purchase of the cameras, I think citizens want the cameras. It's, I think it's kind of modern law enforcement.
Yeah, just to touch on an item that was on uh, that you just showed on the F one twenty-two, um, we do currently have a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Um, in capital projects to replace the boilers in the, at the sheriff's office. Um, the boilers are are fifty years old, but um, we just recently had them inspected. And um, the the inspector said that they look good, and um, so I guess it's the um. And it, it was our, it was our understanding at the time last year that there was some state mandate that was gonna require that to be upgraded. That turned out to be inaccurate, and so um, basically, um, I guess. It's entirely up to you what you wanna do with that hundred and fifty thousand, if you want us to just keep pushing it a- ahead and ca- because at some point, the boilers are going to. Crack out. Uh, I don't know if you wanna keep pushing that ahead, you know, and just. Just to have on hand if that happens, or or what you wanna do with that project. But I just wanna make you aware that we do not intend at this time to do that project until it is absolutely needed.
So Stella, can you go back to fiscal year twenty-two and let's show everyone the cost savings from the sheriff's department? So, the boilers are not happening, the D-LAC switches did not happen, the roof replacement, you're just, you're just saving us, you're saving the taxpayers money, Joe.
That's what I do, Ann, that's what I do.
To the cost of the roof double, that one.
Well, it's a good thing we didn't.
That wasn't my fault.
I'll, I'll bring it back to you, Joe, I don't see any requests, your neighbors are requesting these armored bear cap things. You're talking about boilers and fixing the clothes, very pragmatic, appreciate it.
I didn't know they were requesting that, but uh.
No, it's gotten more and more.
No.
Armored bear caps, sort of.
I thought you, our neighbors.
Sheriff Kennedy, I, I do have a request for about the, your liaison officer.
Sure.
Um, and that's funded this year completely by the region, I believe.
Yep.
For twenty-three, is that also funded by the region completely, or do we need to do something?
No, and we um, did we do a sheet for that, or how did we account for that? I know we um.
We talked about it, cuz it's twenty-five percent funded, it's, the way that program works, it was funded for the first year, one hundred percent by the region. Um, next year, uh, it's twenty-five percent funded by uh D U County, the year after, it'll be fifty percent, and then the year after, it'll be seventy-five percent.
It's in our expenses, yes.
It is in our expense line and uh underwaged, and uh, I believe they, they said the amount was about twenty thousand dollars, wasn't it?
I think so.
Is what it would cost us this year.
Yeah.
So, um, that's, that's what it's costing the county, but um, we actually uh. Captain Kramer, uh, who's in charge of the road patrol, just had a meeting with Gretchen today. Uh, and uh, it sounded like things are are going well, and, you know, if you wanna hear from him, I can have him step up here if you want.
Well, I'm, I'm interested, but it's not part of what this is about, you know, for the budget purposes, I don't know that my colleagues wanna hear. About a new program performance that isn't, isn't directly impacting the budget.
Sure.
Twenty-eight, twenty thousand.
Twenty thousand.
Yeah, so twenty thousand is in our expense line, just, you know, within, or underwages, so.
I would personally, I would tell you to keep the hundred and fifty thousand to the boiler thing. Fifty years old, you're gonna have catastrophic failure any time. It's just like, you better on, keep it there a little bit forward.
And, you know, this remind me of our agreement with D-LAC on capital expenditures, we're responsible for a hundred percent, are they shared? So, on an item like that.
That would be shared.
Um, it would be um seventy-point-seven percent um paid for by the sheriff's office.
Uh, and then the other twenty-nine-point-three is paid more by the city.
Re-reverses, we made.
We budget a hundred percent of the expense.
Okay. All right, and we get reverses across these sides, so.
Do you have anything, Anne?
No, I appreciate the the information, and it, it just, it really does. Uh, look a lot like it's coming from IT, but I understand that that's what it takes to to run the jail, and those are the, those are the replacement items you need. And uh, cars are all on a replacement schedule, that's important, and I don't see any, again, I don't see any requests here that are, that. Are concerning to me, the costs are the costs, I can't, you know, I can't do anything about that.
Do you have any other questions? I think that's it for us.
I will make a motion to approve the sheriff's budget as presented.
Second.
A motion of second to approve the sheriff's budget as presented on the bigger stage. Hi.
Hi.
Hi, cheers.
Thank you, Joe.
Thank you, everybody, appreciate it.
Dan, Ryan, Mike. Next, we have uh the treasurer, Randy Wedmore. Um, everybody good? I'm good, okay, alright, well, if we're good, we'll have you go right out, or Randy?
Okay, my changes won't be quite that drastic as this last couple.
Thank you.
Okay, um, all I have here is just some personnel requests. And uh, I guess the net out of this is, I would like to replace two clerk cashiers, we currently have seven. And um, replace them with one fifty-eight percent deputy and one clerk four. And we can go through each of these individually, there's a.
I mean, we can do that if you'd like, but I, I really think, for me, the important thing is, you know, that your understanding, you're, you're our interim treasurer, so in with. Your career, you know, being there, um, why, and and um, and then I just need to know the overall budget impact on the general basic.
Sure. Why don't we go to the Angie's first, if you go to the next one? I just recently hired Angie from zoning office, and she's gonna be hired as a second deputy. And she's agreed, she's gonna start on the twenty-first of February. It worked for Tammy to keep her there that long, and said we could manage till then. And she's gonna start out as a sixty-seven percent and move to seventy-five, starting July first. And I was currently at eighty-five percent, so this will save the county some money, I just. It kind of allowed me to make some other changes I was hoping to make. Um, she will come in working eight hours a day. So if we go to Duane's, he's currently working seven and a half hours a day. And when she comes in, I wanted to raise, make him also eight hours a day, and he agrees to that. Um, so he'd be working about seven percent more, that extra half hour every day. So he'll be eighty hours instead of seventy-five each pay period. And, let's see, did you have some dollar amounts at the bottom, what that would be? So he'd be going from fifty-eight to sixty-five, but I would like to change him immediately, or at the same time Angie comes in, so they're both working. They're both working eight hours a day then. So, let's see, I had to figure the increase there, just for, if we changed it then, it'd be like for four months, and that would cost. Yeah, so it'd be a a third of that, though, only, so it'd be, it would just be for March through. Through July this year, it'd cost an extra twenty-seven hundred and twelve dollars, and then next year, it'd raise to the, be an increase eight thousand, one forty-three forty.
And this was for the deputy?
This is a current, this is Dwayne Overhoff, or he's currently uh a deputy in our office.
Okay.
Right.
And so you'll have two deputies when Angie comes, is that what?
No, we currently, we, we currently, we had three deputies, I was a deputy.
Okay.
Dwayne and Janelle, Janelle Dewey is still the auto license deputy.
Okay.
So Dwayne is our other deputy. Okay, now if we went back to that fifty-eight percent deputy, this is just a proposal I had, we have a, one of our clerk four has taken on a lot of extra duties. Um, in the transition here, um, she is handling, she's taken over the passport agency, she's our program manager. Um, we're gonna, we were way down on passports the last two years, because for nine months, we didn't do any. So, they're picking up again, and eventually, we had this big lull in passports. You know, once we, in a year or two, I think we'll be probably doubling what we did in passports. Um, she's taken on some other duties too, I don't, I no longer balance the warrant account. When Dan Kanacheck left the auditor's office, the treasurer's office took that over, so she's taken on that duty. She's handling the scheduling of the scanning, and uh, she's taken care of our dealer escrows and electronic titles down there too. I thought in July would be. You know, we have nothing over clerk four, so I just thought raising her to a deputy. And I think of the pay would be, if we go to fifty-eight percent, it's just a dollar ninety over what a clerk four makes. So it'd be about six thousand dollars a year.
So maybe between the elected officials and our HR person, you can remind me, remind me of the deputy status related to elected officials, related to elected comp boards, and compare that to union. And, and who makes those decisions of, of title? How do you determine if somebody is in that elected officials versus they're part of the union negotiation?
So under code, elected officials have the authorization to, to hire deputies. And so every time we've done this, and I talk, I spoke with Randy about this one, is we've never had a union go to purb and say, I believe that that position really is doing union work. So every time we, we go through this, I walk through them with them, is that we really want to see this position take on some supervisory roles. Because supervisory duties will automatically take them out of a union position. So I've talked with Randy about this. This person will be doing a lot of the training of individuals in some supervision. But, I mean, the recourse would be the union would be.
Be able to go to purb and make it, and have them make a determination. And so we just want to avoid that, and making sure when we set, when the elected official exercises the right to hire a deputy, that they're, they're doing it as a deputy position, and not just changing the job title of a, of a previously unioned.
So while the elected official in the department's can offer that up, it's not funded. Basically, guys, you mentioned the right to have a deputy. I'm just curious of the process, however, you're not saying that's a burden here. Your request is learning the process here, Ann.
So under the code for deputies, only, okay, so you had this question just recently before this, is that as we interpret it, it is you only have, you only approve their salaries for a deputy. So they can appoint a deputy if they want, but if you're not, you set the wage form, and it may not be, but they would be offering that deputy or paying that deputy, they'd have to find a different budget. You, you have the right to fund it at the level you want.
Not if they're getting a percentage of what Randy gets, not separate wage, and any time he gets a raise, they all get the same raise.
You're talking about the introductory.
The introductory.
Int introductory wage.
And you do it annually as part of the resolution in July, and that, and that pays off a bunch. It's very green, it's a very green compensation. We calculate that for each of the deputies, and you approve that in the unit each year.
Yeah, now the absolute authorities and nail that number business, a percentage based on how they're.
Yes.
And stuff, scroll back. And so then the percentage of the elected official, who picks that and is their standards amongst the court?
There is up to the individual elected official. There are, I call limits, a maximum limit. I'm depending on if they're the first or second deputy. There's maximums, but.
Seventy-five or eighty-five, so.
Definitely five or inside. So otherwise, it's definitely discretion of the elected official.
And I believe that portion, you can correct me if I'm wrong, is that the elected official shall certify that to the board, and then the board shall prove. So there's not too much debate on whether or not, if, if an elected official wants to take that, or equal sixty-seven, sixty-nine percent. It's a certification process.
I understand that now better.
So I'm sitting here in Zoom, and that was completely and totally garbled. I don't know whose mics didn't work or whatever, but I need the, I got the same questions that Jay just had. Maybe the microphones could be turned on, or I can come down. I'm coming down for the meeting anyway. Somebody can walk me through it. My question to the interim treasurer, who's not an elected official in terms of standing before the voters, is that you're making significant pay increases affecting deputies, and is that your intent?
Okay, well, when Angie started, I didn't feel she should be starting at a higher wage than the deputy currently had there, our second deputy, and, you know, he's going to be the one helping train her. I thought, well, in four months, then they'll both be at seventy-five percent. So I, I did lower the wage, instead of coming right in at eighty-five percent for.
So really, you're looking at wage compaction, right? You don't have enough difference in pay in terms of longevity versus the pay that's being offered, is, is that what we have?
Right. You know, once they're there a few years, we'll, we'll look at it again. But for now, I'd like, well, she's going to be starting out at the sixty-seven percent, and then go into seventy-five percent July first.
So it was the cost of the package with everything.
Okay, if you go back to Angie's there. I was making eighty-five percent, so I think mine, my package there was eighty-six thousand a year. So, you know, this year it's going to be half of that. So it'd be eighteen thousand, so for six months, it'll, it'll be about a nine thousand dollar savings there.
But Angie's just replacing you.
Right.
Right.
Well, she's coming in as a second deputy. I'm, I'm dividing some duties up between everybody until, you know, we get her up to speed. Now, it's going to take, she's going to have to go through a year's cycle to do all the.
Saying she is technically replacing your position.
Exactly.
So we haven't put a new position here yet.
It's not a new position. No, the new position I was requesting was the fifty-eight percent deputy for, for Christine.
Okay.
And that's a, she's currently a clerk four, so it's a, it's a modest raise. But, you know, it's something, she's been there seven years, and, and she is picking up all these extra duties.
The comp board is requesting, I think, a ten percent raise generally for the treasurer's position. Will that ten percent go down to include these deputies as well?
Yes.
Is, is that what you're already including in the salary bumps, going from sixty-seven to seventy-five percent? Or is that yet in addition to that, there's going to be in, so in July, they're not only going to just get the number you've got here, but then whatever additional raise the board of supervisors sets based on the comp board recommendations. Is that right?
That, that is correct.
Yeah, I, I think I, those are, I mean, they, they seem like they're significant raises. And I guess that's what I would need to see somehow drawn out.
Supervising, I, I generally would concur, because that's why I voted against the elected officials' raises for the last two years because of those scenarios. Percentages were too high, and/or many elected officials just walked in, and they were very high rates. I was at a three to five percent range. That all said, I don't necessarily see this scenario as the exactly same scenario. This is an individual who works for the county on voluntarily, so to speak, moving to your office, to your department. Is that right? He's not drafted, so nobody grabbed Angie and said, you have to be here. Is that true, or?
Yeah, she, she applied for the job. I worked with her for ten years, so I know what I'm getting with Angie.
Yeah, yeah, but it's, so, yeah, so it's, but it's.
And I, I thought the wage was relatively low. You know, I could have went as a second deputy, it could have been eighty percent. We brought it down to sixty-seven. Or seventy-five, let's say seventy-five in four months.
She's still in your shoes and making less than what you did.
Exactly.
But you have thirty years.
I mean, of all these, of everything I'm requesting, it'll be payroll neutral. I'll actually be less payroll than I, than I since budgeted.
Maybe one last question, and, and so would this be a lateral move or an increase move for the employee?
For Christine, this one would be a, th- this would be a new deputy position, so this would, oh, which one are we on here?
This is Angie, I believe.
Angie.
I'm not sure.
She, she was hired as a deputy. So she was a clerk four at, at zoning, so this is an increase in pay.
Which would make sense, why she wants to move, not that.
Exactly.
Not that working in the treasurer's office isn't great, working with you isn't great.
Every other position.
For wage.
Yeah, this is the only new person coming in. Every other one I'm talking about is a, some of that's already in the office.
I understand much better. Thank you. That helps a lot for me.
Just as a reminder, if I may, this is the auditor, because this is going to come up next Monday when I do a little presentation. Where Dwayne and Angie are concerned, that's not a decision for the board. The elected official certifies that number to the board, and the board shall accept. Just so we understand, and we're all on the same page. The new deputy, the fifty-eight percent deputy, would be a position that you'd be converting. Yes, and I just want to make sure that everybody is on the same page with that information.
I heard what you said, but I only kind of got half of it with the new versus existing, but I will take your words for it. And Michelle definitely scared me off.
So to that effect, why do we need to have the new deputy position?
It's just someone that's taking on extra duties, and there's nothing. There's a clerk four is the highest union position we have. And she's taken on more duties. We currently have two clerk fours in our office, and she's been there seven years.
Randy, how old are you? How long you been in this office?
Thirty-three. I've been on the front line, so I kind of know what everybody's doing, and.
I appreciate you being the part.
Yes.
So I, you do have my, 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 I'm asking approval as far as.
I mean, the fifty-eight percent, you know, if you want to negotiate that, but that, I was looking at something that's less than a two dollar raise. So that, that is a modest increase, and I was looking at some other counties, our size, and most of them do have four deputies. And some of the larger ones have, actually, some of the smaller counties have about a third of their employees are deputies. Some have all deputies, because, you know, they're small, they may have no unions. But I was going to Woodbury County and to Des Moines County, similar sized counties, and they, they do have four, four deputies in their office, so. It's not out of line. And I just thought it's just something that she kind of deserves.
And, and I don't disagree with anything that you've said, Randy. It's just that, you know, you're new to your position, and then bringing these folks along, and then we are on, at these unprecedented times where the comp board has asked for very large increases. So it, it is just, you know, were you here, just.
Well, we.
It, it's about the budget. That's all we're talking about today, is how do we make the budget work?
Well, let's put that one on hold now and talk about the last two, then we'll go back to that one. So I do have two other requests. I was looking at the union, what we have out there for clerk fours and clerk threes. And I was showing eleven clerk fours and eleven clerk threes in the bargaining unit. Our office has eight of the clerk threes, eight of the eleven. And we have two of the eleven clerk fours, so it's a little, little out of whack. So that's why I was proposing, I think I have a clerk four position on.
It's the last one listed there, but.
And so clerk three and fours are steps that would establish.
Right.
The cost departments to get them going to be filling that definition. I didn't even.
Yes, we have established and negotiated salary ranges for each of those classifications. So he's identified an employee who has taken on the responsibility that matches more of a clerk four than a.
For cost departments within the same unit.
Correct. Yep, all of them that work.
And we, we previously had three clerk fours in the office.
What you're saying is you have.
And we had retirement, and one never got replaced, so.
Lower clerk three, lower wages, basically.
True. Our entry level, we have. Eight of them at the entry level, and we only have twelve employees in the office, so eight of them are at our entry level. So that's, I'm just proposing one clerk three become a clerk four.
Does our HR director have a recommendation with regard to this? I'm, I'm assuming you've gone through all this with Randy?
I have. With the clerk one, like I said, he has identified an employee that he can take on the responsibilities that more clearly fit the clerk four position. Even that, for a weird part-time position, you have, you read.
No.
Okay, so yes, I would recommend this one, since he, the employee clearly is taking on some additional responsibilities.
And then we have one last one. Well, we used to have a part-timer come in for the summer. The ones in June, it was, it'd be a temporary part-time, just to help fill in. You know, we have three people on vacation every day during the summer, because that's the most we can allow. And it's just nice to have an extra person that can just do the basic, do renewals, answer the phones. And I was posing, I think, four hundred hours there, but it really, our other part-timer is that we have a, one we budgeted for fifteen hundred hours that isn't coming close to that. Should probably only have seven or eight hundred this year, so. I wouldn't, I would guess, next year, we will, she would still maybe eleven hundred hours and this fourteen hundred hours. But it's kind of budgeted already. We wouldn't even have to raise the, we could, we could actually reduce it, because between the two, they would only have what we have budgeted. And it would just be nice to bring somebody in. It would be a temporary part-time position as a clerk three.
Any questions, Ian?
No.
Any capital, urban requests, scanning things, or any?
Everything else, I had minor budget changes. I think I raised supplies like a thousand dollars, because I had to get and get a lot of deposits, stamps, and lead release stamps, and order new envelopes, and I did get a new desk. Finally got moved into the office last Friday.
Good. How's it feeling?
Feels a little more real now.
Thanks for stepping up and doing it.
That's all I had there.
All right, thank you. The motion will be approved.
I will make the motion to approve the treasurer's budget as presented.
I will second. I have a motion and a second to approve the treasurer's budget on favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed?
Nay.
Here's to one. Like, we aren't finished until four fifty. Make a motion to adjourn until four fifty.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to adjourn till four fifty. All in favor, signify by aye.
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 Aye. We are adjourned.